Are we ready?
Green light.
All right. It's six o'clock and we will call the City Council of Kerrville to order. Let's rise and Ms. Clarkson is going to give our invocation and pledge.
Dear God, I come to you personally in a spirit of thanks, thankful for everyone that is in this room tonight because they are engaged and they are concerned and they have care for our community. And I'm thankful for those who aren't here, those who are engaged in the work of the city and those that we support even though they're not as engaged as some of our other, some of the others that are here tonight. I just ask that you open our hearts and you open our minds and our ears to respectful conversations about important topics for our community. And also just please guide our leaders at the state and the national level as we watch election results come in and just put your arms around them. And we give you thanks for living in a country where we have a free and open process for discussing matters locally and that we have the right to exercise our rights to be a free and independent nation. And we thank you for these blessings and ask that you watch over us tonight in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There he is. Come on in.
So quiet. Nervous. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
We've got a few announcements I'm gonna go through them quickly because as you know we have quite a long agenda. Holiday light parade, not this Saturday but next Saturday. We encourage everybody to come out. We had ninety floats as of this morning. We have late registration that goes through this Friday. If you want to get a float in, we can still fit about ten more. So if you want to do that, call the Parks and Recreation Department, but no matter what, come out next Friday, always a big crowd, always a lot of fun, a lot of great floats. We look forward to it. Since it'll be a while before we meet again, I'm gonna go ahead and point out that we have running home for the holidays, the 5K that starts December 3rd. And we're actually moving that, we've had it in the mornings in the past, I think we're moving it to the afternoon, might be a little warmer. Some of those morning runs have been cold. The entry fee is $10. Great costumes on that too, good exercise, so we encourage everybody to come out for that. It's in Louise Hayes Park. This is a new activity that we're starting, our Senior Services Advisory Committee tomorrow. Will be the first Wednesday walk. They meet at 5:30 at the Dedrick Center and they'll be walking from the Dedrick Center to the Riverside Nature Center and back. And they're gonna try and do that every Wednesday. So we encourage if you want to get some exercise and good fellowship to come on out because that's a beautiful stretch of the riverwalk there. And finally, Friday is Veterans Day, Saturday is the Veterans Day Parade. So we encourage everybody to show up, Louise Hayes Park, 9 to 12 for the Veterans Day Parade that's gonna be out there. We're gonna have a lot of food trucks and a lot of music festivities. So a great event to honor our veterans and we hope that as many people can come in as can make time for that. And that's it for me. I'll turn it over to y'all if y'all have any announcements.
All right. Council, anybody have anything they'd like to mention?
Oh, go ahead.
No.
Okay. I was gonna say, I mean, we should know today's election day and so if you haven't already voted or if you know who's someone who hasn't voted, you got just under an hour to make it to the polls before they close. So I hope everyone who is here has voted.
Okay. And I just have a quick one. Kudos to Shriners University on their decision to bring football to Kerrville. I think this is just wonderful and not only is it gonna be great for them, it's gonna be great for us and what a great economic impact it will have on our city. So I just think we need to say thank you to them every time we see them. So they're just such a great partner. Okay, we have two presentations to make. Is Mr. Vasquez in the house?
I think we're gonna have to run into the game because I'm gonna be watching the bellwether as well.
Get here, right? You made it. I'm good, good to see you. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Do you have some other family friends you wanna bring up? Come on up.
Bring 'em up, bring 'em up.
Come on in. All right, just gather around. This is wonderful. So, City of Kerrville recognizes Richard Vasquez with the November 8, 2022 Kerrville Kindness Award. Several Kerrville Police Department officers recently recognized that one of their fellow officers was in need of assistance due to bills associated with medical expenses. Officers began working on the idea of cooking and selling barbecue plates to help raise money for the officer. As the officers planned the barbecue, Richard Vasquez, who is the general manager of Advanced Auto Parts, assisted them with securing chicken at a reduced price and purchased two boxes of chicken himself to donate to the cause. Mr. Vasquez provided his barbecue pit for use in cooking the meals to be sold. In addition, on the day of the event, he woke up at 3:00 AM to get his barbecue pit on-site and got the fire started and ready to begin cooking at 6:00 AM. He also provided tables, ice chests, utensils, and many other supplies needed to have a successful barbecue. And he notified local radio stations and provided them with information related to the barbecue plate sales, enabling the promotion of the event throughout the morning. Mr. Vasquez did the majority of the cooking and helped serve customers throughout the day. His efforts and assistance helping an officer in need exemplify the character we look for in a Kerrville Kindness Award recipient. The Kerrville Police Department appreciates the support and all the hard work Richard Vasquez put into this event to help one of our officers in time of need. Thank you. I hope all these people that you brought with you were part of all the things you did.
I think we're at 3:00.
Good for you. Will you guys all introduce yourselves and tell us how you're related or associated?
I am Mike Vasquez, Richard's older brother, and he does this all the time, all the time. I mean, he did it for me when I needed a kidney transplant.
Oh.
It was theirs.
Wow.
I'm Richard, Yogi's brother. I'll be the first one to say he has a big heart, always willing to do what he has to help the community. So proud that he is being nominated for this award.
That's great. You have somebody keep you alive.
That would be me. I miss Y Vasquez, this fine young man's wife and proud to be. Thank you all.
And you guys?
Well, Mark Vasquez, his mom. I'm very proud of him. He's always there for us. He's always trying to help other people and everything.
You did a good job.
I'm the daddy.
So are we all?
I'm the one who teaches him how to cook.
True story.
And you guys?
I'm his daughter. And I'm very proud of what he does and hope to do what he does every single day.
Me, I'm the Susan Combs and I'm his father-in-law.
Son-in-law.
Big crowd.
That is great.
I'm very proud.
I'm son-in-law.
We appreciate so much what you've done, Richard, and I'll let you hold this. And Mom, get over here close to him. I'll stand on the edge. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all right, he'll get it right. All right, well, you guys go out.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm the son-in-law when she calls me daddy.
All right, and then we have a proclamation. Do you want to let anyone here from the proclamation?
Yes.
Here they are, come in, come in. Does it have all of you here? We'll let you all introduce yourselves in just a little bit. We'll do this first. All right. City of Kerrville proclamation, and lots of whereasses. Whereas municipal courts are state courts and play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. We could ask everybody to raise their hand who's been to municipal, but we won't. Whereas the City of Kerrville has hosted the municipal court since 1942 and whereas the City of Kerrville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judicial judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the City Council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the State of Texas procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all, I'm sorry, contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all dependents including indigent defendants and supports the Kerrville Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. And we will declare this municipal court weak in Kerrville and encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing the importance of municipal courts, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. So, thank you, thank you. I did sign it. So, thank you. Will you all tell us who you are and what you do with the court?
So, I'm Esetiana Luenat and I'm the court administrator.
I'm Tracy Lewis, I'm an assistant, I mean, I am just a clerk.
Not just a clerk, I think if that's a clerk.
I'm a clerk.
Thank you.
I'm Rachel Ramirez and I'm the assistant court administrator.
Okay.
I'm Melanie Hutzel, I'm one of the deputy clerks.
Pat McGuire, presiding judge.
Nelson Spitler, city marshal and bailiff for the court.
William Tatch, the municipal prosecutor.
Do you wanna say yours again?
Tracy Lewis, I'm a deputy court clerk.
All right, well, thank you guys, we appreciate you so very, very much.
Thank you.
And we'll let you hold this.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and we hope none of us come to see you soon. All right, before we begin, Visitors and Citizens Forum, there we go. Okay, we have some housekeeping items that we need to cover. At the last council meeting, we had a speaker who addressed council on an issue involving the city, specifically the library. That speaker was out of line and violated the rules and procedures of the City of Kerrville. I apologize to everyone and anyone who had to endure that speaker. It should not have happened and you may be assured it will not happen again. So, I am reminding all who are in attendance tonight of three rules. They are found in the 2019 edition on page four of the Kerrville City Council Rules and Procedures. The first one is, as mayor, I am the presiding officer for these meetings. It's rule number 4.3. Number two, per our rules, the presiding officer is charged with, quote, "preserving order and decorum." Rule number 4.4. Number three, our rules also provide that, quote, "visitors shall refrain from abusive, rude, or inappropriate conduct." Also, rule number 4.4. The speaker at the last meeting was abusive, rude, and displayed inappropriate conduct for a public meeting, particularly one that is broadcast. Again, you have my word that such conduct will not be tolerated again. Anyone who wishes to address council using the four-minute time limit, but it will be done in a way that is respectful of our rules, of each other, of our time here, and with the understanding that these meetings are open and broadcast to the public. In addition, I want to make sure everyone has their phones turned off. I know everyone's interested in the elections tonight, but I'm also going to ask you, if you get election information on your phone, please just keep it to yourself, don't share it with anybody until we take a break later on. And you'll have time then to talk about it and see what's going on in the world out there at that time. With that said, let us move to the consent agenda. Visitors Forum. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. We do need Visitors Forum, yes. Shelley, do we have some signed up to speak?
We do have one citizen.
Speaker?
Reuben Aguilar.
Here, movie.
There we go. Thank you.
Oh, forgive me, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
You can state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Reuben Aguilar and I reside in Fredericksburg, Texas. And the reason I came over here is because I've seen people from Kerrville go and speak over there. And so, but anyways, if I seem to be out of line or something, please let me know and I'll refrain. So this is directed at the people of the critical race theory who are pushing the critical race theory, who are singling out a race of people and calling them racists. Did you know Mexican Texans known as Tejanos also fought for the Confederacy? In some cases fought more fiercely because they believed in the Confederate ideology? Did you know Native Americans were hired by slave owners to hunt down runaway slaves? And Native Americans considered back slaves inferior because why else would you be a slave? Because Native Americans enslaved each other, they stole land from each other. Mayas and Aztecs, the Mesoamericans also enslaved weaker tribes. The word slave comes from the Slavic people of Eastern Europe, white people who were enslaved by Muslims. Before white men came to America, Spaniards and Mexicans stole land from Native Americans. We are all guilty of evil. To blame white people for their ancestors would be like us blaming Japanese children for Pearl Harbor. It's ridiculous. Racism exists in all people. You want proof? We just saw the Mexican-American City Council members, Democrats, caught using racial slurs against African-Americans in California. Or how about these black celebrities engaging in antisemitism? And did you know some Afro-Americans also owned slaves? The problem is not quite supremacy, but white liberalism pushing a false narrative. I know many white people, they're not racist. I went to school with many white kids, they weren't privileged. Racism is an individual choice. Native Americans, Hispanics, Anglo-Americans, African and Asian Americans, European and Middle Eastern Americans, we are family. Our ancestors fought for this country. Leave the Democratic Party, join the conservative Republicans. Before COVID hit, volunteers of America stated that close to 50 million Americans were living in dire poverty. Now there's more. These are a people, Americans, whose ancestors fought for this country, of all races, but Democrats care more for illegal aliens, putting them up in fancy hotels with room service, giving them free taxpayer money while Americans suffer on the streets. There's nothing humanitarian or noble about these people, there's a biblical bone.
Excuse me, let's not.
Forgive me, I'm very passionate, ma'am. I will refrain. So, they wanna legalize drugs, not knowing or caring what this poison does to human beings and communities. They wanna legalize crime and chaos. They wanna normalize child grooming and pedophilia, calling them MAP, minor attracted people, when the correct term is child molesters. That's not who we are as an American people. As for our history, as brutal and inescapable as it is, we are the products of that history. Nothing says we have to stay there. We can respect each other and treat each other with dignity. But the only ones who wanna keep us there are the Democrats. They wanna remove God and prayer and replace them with mysticism and weird and gruesome lifestyles.
Let's, I've asked you, let's not designate Democrats and Republicans.
Yeah, I think he can state his opinion.
Yeah, it's my free speech, ma'am. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be confrontational, I'm just, but you know what, you're a lady, so I'm gonna respect that, okay? Join the conservative Republicans, help us restore some semblance of sanity. I was a Democrat all my life, but this is not the same Democratic Party. They're rabid lunatics, man. God bless America and let's go Brandon, Trump 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers. Let's go to the consent agenda, please. Is there any item? We have A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. Is there any item, council, that you wish to pull?
I'm requesting to pull item 4B, 4C, and 4I. And unless any other councillor has any others, I'll move to approve the rest of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, you want to pull B?
C.
C.
And I.
And I. Are there any citizens who wish to pull the items? No, ma'am. All right, thank you. All right, then let's, do we have a motion for A? For D? For E? For F? For G? For H?
Yes, I move to approve the rest of the consent agenda items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right. Roman, B, and C, and I, please. Let's take B first.
This agreement's between the county and the city. Has the, just a couple of questions. Has the county approved the agreement yet? Does anybody from councillor staff know that?
Hi, can you?
Thank you.
Yes, I've already spoken to Heather Stevins and she has approved it on behalf of form.
As a form, right.
Yes.
Do we anticipate possibly any concerns from, because I know the county, I guess the county has not voted on the agreement. Do we have any concerns from the county?
No, this is a mutual thing. The county had its say, the city had its say. We don't anticipate any changes whatsoever.
Thank you.
All right, C?
C?
C.
Do you want a motion on 4B first or no?
Let's, we can do the three together, hopefully, if we can. Go ahead with C.
Okay, I think they have to be taken separately, but that's fine. 4C. To staff, what is the cost associated with this agreement? I noticed the agenda bill said that the expenditure required said not applicable, but there were a few provisions in the agreement that required the city to contribute something financially, but I didn't see an amount indicated anywhere or any estimates for that. So just curious, what are we looking at possibly having to contribute later down the road?
Okay, so this agreement doesn't necessarily address any of those financials specifically. We have $21,000 that we've had budgeted for over a year to conduct this process, to construct this project.
And that's sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. And do we, do we have the space for the addition, for the addition of the county's backup workstation? Are we sufficient in terms of our current location for the space on that?
We're gonna make it work.
Okay, all right, sounds good. That's all I got there. Thank you.
Okay, and I?
I is the minutes. I had a proposed amendment to make. The amendment is to page two under item 4A. It's regarding the declaration of trust. I made a motion and only technically the first half of the motion was put in the minutes. So I'm just requesting that the motion's properly reflected in the motion, the motion is properly reflected in the minutes in its entirety. And as you can see, the city secretary printed out my request and provided it to each of you. And my request is consistent with how we usually record minutes and previous minutes. And I attached previous minutes for a highlighted version, I don't see that here, but that's my request.
Okay. I just wanna make a comment on that. I don't particularly want to go over these items repeatedly. And I understand and I will approve your amendment, but we've talked many times about minutes and about that we have everything digitally recorded and these are supposed to be a summarization. I will respect your desire to make this change, but I just don't want to always continue to entertain motions, this motion in particular. I don't, I don't think, did it get a second? I mean, it wasn't something that even got a second. So it is on record, it is digitally recorded, so I just hope that going forward, we don't have to correct every, you know, word that is in a motion, so. But I will respect your desire to do that in this case.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 4B, do we have, would you like to make a motion, Roman?
I'd be happy to. I'll move to approve the interlocal agreement with the county of Kerr, Texas.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand, thank you. It passes, 4C, Roman?
I'm move to approve the interlocal agreement with the county of Kerr, Texas for supplemental workstations at the Kerr County Sheriff's Office and the Kerrville Police Department.
A second?
Second.
And all in favor? And the last one? We all move to a table, right?
No, my motion was to approve the minutes with the amendment.
Oh, with amendment, okay, all right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, raise your right hand and we are good. All right, that takes care of our consent agenda. We will move on to 5A. Shelley?
Resolution number 72-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Block 7, Block 1, Riverside Edition, and more commonly known as 339 Guadalupe. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Drew?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a batch of conditional use permits for short-term rental units. And these are again, under the old code, I know councils made their adoption, or amendment to the zoning code, these applications came in prior to that amendment being effective. So these are, again, conditional use permits from their respective zoning districts. 339 Guadalupe Street is Zone R2. It is a three-bedroom house and the applicant has shown that they have room for the four parking spaces, or excuse me, two-bedroom, required three, providing four. And here is the short-term rental map showing that location. Would you please answer any question? Planning Commission approved it on October 6th with unanimous vote.
Okay.
Please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Does the applicant want to say anything? No, no, okay. Okay. All right. At 6:29, we will open the public hearings. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 6:29, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution number 72-2022.
Second. Motion- Uh, motion and a second, all raise your right hand, please, and it passes unanimously, thank you. All right, five B.
Resolution number seventy-three dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot three and part of lot four, block three, Hazy Hills Edition, and more commonly known as eight hundred Lake. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have three citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, this is an appeal for this case, the planning commission had a, did not approve it, they had a vote of three-three on this one. Uh, it is a three-bedroom house and they have shown that they can meet the four parking spaces as required by code. And there are no, none in the immediate area. Have you pleased to answer any questions before or after a public hearing?
I just want to say, welcome to the Rollins family, welcome back to Kerrville.
Um, is the applicant here?
Yes, there.
Okay, would they like, they, or would they like to say something?
Hi, my name is Sharon Rollins and I came home from the hospital into this home. And we all three graduated from high school, from Tyvee High School, and we hold this home near and dear to our hearts. We've maintained relationships with folks in the area, um, that we both grew, grown up with, and then also we've made new friends with people who knew our father when he lived there, he passed away in January of twenty-twenty-one and we inherited the house. And I would love to retire there someday, we may have to fight and do rock, paper, scissors over who gets to do that. Uh, but we love coming back to Kerrville and one of the ways that we could make this possible to keep the up, do the upkeep and the, um, bills for the house and repairs would be to do some short-term rentals on occasion when we aren't working there remotely or spending weekends there. Um, so I'll let Darrell and Kevin speak to, to their experiences as well.
Thank you, and, uh, we really do appreciate the chance to do this and it is something that we're well aware of, is, uh, an honor and a privilege. And this is, um, is, as we've, as I've been gone since leaving Tyvee many decades ago, is, at least one of us can attest to. And, um, it is something that, uh, you, you live somewhere else, but Kerrville's always been my home and just crossing the, you know, as soon as you get in the county, it just feels different and that's something that we don't want to ever lose and, and won't. But in part of that, this short-term rental deal, I've been in real estate for years and banking and understand the significance, ours is in single-family area. It is something that doesn't have a lot of exposure just because of the church property across the street, but more important than that, it is the, uh, our neighbors that we know, many of whom have there, been there since we were little and it is some, we, um, do not want to take any kind of risk on expanding that or making any kind of problems to the neighbors, we value that more than cost. And so we'll be tracking that and watching that and Kevin knows all the nerd stuff about how that happens. Um, but I do say, we, one reason we really love this location, thank it's good, we've had friends come with us for years and family, easily accessible anywhere in town and, um, we just, it's, it's something that we think will help our freeloadin' friends that always want to come to Kerrville, help us control them a little bit and also bring new people to Kerrville who just, every time they come, they love it, and so, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kevin Rollins. Did that work? Okay. Just wanted to quickly mention that it's really close to a lot of things that are, uh, enjoyable about the town. So we like coming here and trying out new restaurants that have popped up or, the, the River Trail's one of my favorites, uh, running down there. Um, so it's just, it's just centrally located for us where we like to, to go and enjoy the city. Um, I was also going to talk about just the nerd part he mentioned and how the short-term rental platforms are great because they allow you to filter who you allow in your home and even more so than a, a long-term rental, you kind of know who you're getting based on reviews and, and the scores that those people have accumulated over the time. And I personally do a lot of short-term rentals, um, like I just was in Kentucky for a week visiting my daughter at college and it enables you to be part of the city, whereas a hotel might be on the outside of town or something and it, it puts you right downtown and, uh, I was able to just be above, in a loft apartment above the town and go to different places, coffee shops and things and get to know some of the people around the area and it's, it's just a really cool experience, so would like to provide that for, for others as well when we're not using it, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the family? Okay, at six thirty-five, we will open the public hearing, do we have anyone signed up?
Those were the three.
That's, those were the three, at, is there anyone else in? With us, all right, at six thirty-five, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
Ma'am, mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, resolution number seventy-three dash twenty-twenty-two on the condition that Darrell not telling these stories about me and I not telling these stories.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I can second that.
I'll just do the resolution then.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution number seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot one, block one, River Hill TH Edition, and more commonly known as five oh three Oakland Hills. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Mayor, thank you, this is zone R2, it is a three-bedroom home, they do have the four parking spaces as required by code. And here's the short-term rental map, there are some around, around the corner from the clubhouse on River Hill Club Lane, be the closest adjacent property. Would you please, or, planning commission recommended with a five-two vote on October sixth.
All right, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to make a comment? Okay, all right, um, at, uh, six thirty-seven, we'll open the public hearing, do we have anyone who wishes to speak? At six thirty-seven, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-four dash twenty-twenty-two.
A second?
Second.
Joe? All in favor, right hand, and it passes unanimously, very good. Five D?
Resolution number seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot five, block one, Hill, River Hill Los Casitas Edition, more commonly known as two twenty River Hill Club number five. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
This property is also zoned R2. This and the next three actually do have a shared parking lot, uh, so we'll be working with those owners, kind of doing an inventory on parking, um, as the planning commission discussed in their, their, uh, meeting on October sixth. This was approved with a unanimous vote, um, it is a two-bedroom home requiring three parking spaces. Would you please to answer any questions?
Is the applicant here and do they want to make a statement? Oh, yes, all right, thank you.
The only thing I'll say is that we do have a letter which I-
Please make sure you use the mic, thank you.
We have a letter which I dropped off at Mr. Paxton's office, but River Hill is willing to work with Terry, Cody, and I, she has the other three, on parking, to give us access to parking along the tennis courts if needed for a property manager. However, I'm going to live across the golf course, so I'm, I'll ride in my golf cart, but, um, so they were, they are working, they are willing to work with us on parking.
We, we do need you on the record.
Do what?
We need your name for the record.
Janice Bowen.
Thanks, Drew. All right, uh, at six thirty-nine, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak? At six thirty-nine, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number, are we on seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
A second?
Second.
Joe, thank you, all in favor, right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Five E, Shelley?
Resolution number seventy-six dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot nine, block one, River Hill Los Casitas Edition, and more commonly known as two twenty River Hill Club number nine. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. Um, there are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
This one is also zoned R2.
Same song, second verse.
Two-bedroom home and the unanimous vote from the planning and zoning commission.
All right, at, uh, is the app, is there anyone who wishes, you what, wishes?
Time for Terry too, she has to do a Grammy, she had to go see.
Okay, all right. Okay, at six forty, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak? At six forty, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion? Council, wake up.
I move we adopt resolution number seventy-six twenty-twenty-two.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, right hand, very good, it passes unanimously, five F?
Resolution number seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot thirteen, block one, River Hill Los Casitas Edition, more commonly known as two twenty River Hill Club number thirteen. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions, there are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Same song, third verse.
That's right.
Zoned R2, also a two-bedroom unit with unanimous vote from the planning commission.
All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, at six forty-one, we will open the public hearing, do we have anyone for the public hearing who wishes to speak? At six forty-two, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion, council?
I move we adopt resolution number seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second, thank you, uh, all in favor, right hand, please, and it passes unanimously. All right, five G?
Resolution number seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot fourteen, block one, River Hill Los Casitas Edition, and more commonly known as two twenty River Hill Club number fourteen. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Verse four?
Slight change, the secret verse, right? This is a three-bedroom home requiring four parking spaces.
Okay.
Uh, with unanimous vote from the planning commission.
All right, is there anyone to speak? At six forty-three, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who, at this point, wishes to speak? At six forty-three, we will close the public hearing, council, do we have a motion?
You know what, I'll move it over here.
Good.
I will move that we adopt resolution number, are we on seventy-eight?
Yes.
Seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two, Roman? You're not going to, okay, Roman didn't want to second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe? All in favor, raise your hand, it is unanimous, thank you very much, five H?
Resolution number seventy-nine dash twenty-twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of lot thirteen, block three, Mesa Park subdivision phase one, and more commonly known as twenty-three twenty-four Trails End. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permits subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have two citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you.
This property is zoned R1, single-family, is a three-bedroom home requiring four parking spaces, you can see they have that provided here. And planning and zoning commission did not recommend approval and with a six-one vote to deny.
Is there someone from the residency, is an owner here?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to speak to us?
Yes, please. Hi, my name is Colette Zagarella. Um, the reason for denial was, um, because I was unfortunately out of the country. Um, I was gone for a month and it just happened to be that when I got my notice, um, I, I think I, I left on the fourth and I got my notice on the sixth and then I came back on the seventh and the hearing was on the sixth. So I do apologize to the city council, basically for wasting your time because I wasn't here. Um, so, um, Trails End, as I call it, um, I kind of wanted it a little bit different from the normal short-term rental. Uh, when we came to Kerrville, we really struggled to find temporary accommodation for a more midterm accommodation. Um, there was a lot of Airbnbs, there was a lot of, um, VRBOs, but nothing a little bit longer. And we had no idea if we're going to be here for a month, if we, before we find our home that we wanted. So we didn't know how long that process was going to take and the first time we came to Kerrville, we came for three weeks, we were unsuccessful to find a house. And then we just decided, okay, well, we'll just move here and then that's easier to look. And we were pretty much from August to, um, we found Trails End basically in October. Yeah, Octo, no, November, and then we closed in December. Um, but what happened was, um, we got Trails End and then our realtor lurked in, we went escrow with Trails End and my realtor called me and said, hey, I know you guys just bought Trails End, but, um, there's another property that you guys got to come see and that's the house we are currently living in. So then we kind of was stuck with Trails End in a good way. Um, and Trails End, what I've heard around the community and I've spoken to quite a few people, um, I also have a contact at Peterson's and they have traveling doctors and traveling nurses. And I know there's such a, between short-term and long-term rental is basically, it's a month, right? But my problem is, what if I have three and a half weeks, or what if I have three weeks, or how about two weeks? Um, I don't think my property, I don't want short-term as in a weekend, that's for family when they come into town, but I, I'm not after the, come party at my house, no thank you. Um, so I am trying to provide a gap in the market for Kerrville because when we were trying to find that rental, when we came into town for the three weeks, it was almost impossible. I phoned probably thirty places and, I mean, it was either Airbnb was just too out of my price, price range and then long-term rentals like, well, sign a contract, so I ask you guys to reconsider my request for, I wouldn't call it short-term, but short to midterm rental, um, because I know there is a gap in the market and Kerrville does need something like that. I thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else involved with you that would like to speak?
I have two neighbors.
Okay, all right, we'll open the public hearing and we'll do that at six forty-eight and, um-
Paul Harrison?
Thank you.
Yes, I, you know, I'm here to basically support Colette, I've been living in that neighborhood for nine years now and I was in the same boat she was in, when I came back to Kerrville, I couldn't find anything for a month, two months, three months. I ended up living with my mother-in-law, that actually wasn't too bad, but what happened was, we had to get out of there and I was forced to go into a lease. And that lease set me back and while I was set back, the price of real estate went up. Well, I eventually did find a house that was affordable and it was right in that neighborhood, right down the street. So that house in particular, I lived right across the street from it, I'm right down the street from it now, I see that house every day, I walk by that house every day. That house is one of the best-kept houses in that neighborhood, there are five rental properties around that house. If you want to regulate properties, you need to go back and regulate some of those rentals, because I've even offered to cut that grass for free. But at the end of the day, I want you to know as a resident, and I've been a long-term resident in that neighborhood, there's only two streets. They do a great job, I mean, the landscapers are there, the whole kit and caboodle, the house butts up to an apartment complex. The, the challenges aren't in the neighborhood, it's in the apartment complex, I know, I lived there for four years. Not in the apartments, but they were butted up to where I live. But at the end of the day, they do a great job of taking care of the property, my sister-in-law is a traveling- My sister-in-law is a traveling nurse, so I know for a fact that it's definitely a need, but it's also a need that I needed, but it wasn't available at that time. So I would ask you, on her behalf, to reconsider as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Uttrich?
Thank you, it's Uttrich, but anyway. So Colette is my next door neighbor. When she bought, I lived in the house right next door to her. And outside of saying all the things that everyone else has expressed today about short-term rentals, I myself have used them in my life, often when I had to travel from, to take, to visit with my mother. But I want to speak personally on Colette's character. Outside of her just being a neighbor that we met, and I was in fear of when my husband met her, because she asked, you know, he was a very aggressive individual, and wanted to know what kind of people they were. And for my husband to actually like someone was unique in itself. But with that, and at, I'm going to attempt not to get emotional, my husband passed away with a very aggressive form of cancer, and Colette offered her, me, to have people stay in her house for free, right, and have to pay it. She came to my house and helped me during that transition, and I only met her a few months before that. So she has taken care of that property, and I now call her a friend because of what she's done. And I know I've had people come over when the sign was put up, and they talked about, you know, she's going to have wild parties, and blah, blah, blah. Never, ever the case of the character of this lady and her family. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
You're blessed to have some great neighbors.
Yes.
All right, at six, is there anyone else who wishes to speak, before we close the public hearing? At 6:51, we will close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have a motion?
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
For Drew. Okay, the process of notifying her to appear before planning and zoning or getting, what is the timeline there for that, from the time you receive the letter until the time you're supposed to appear?
The letters go out 10 to 14 days prior to the meeting, prior to the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Any other correspondence would have been through my government online, and through the application and invoice process.
Okay, so I'm confused, because you said that you, you were out of town when you got the letter?
Yes, ma'am, I was, I was in South Africa for a month.
Okay, so you missed the whole thing. You missed the letter, and you missed the date.
I did.
Okay, and another question I have, is there a way, before we make a decision, could we consider letting her reappear before planning and zoning, or is it too late for that?
Well, she really doesn't need to, I mean, we're the final.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just the appeal process.
Yeah, because, I mean, I normally don't like to approve something when there's been a six-to-one denial, but I understand the denial was probably because she wasn't there.
Yes, that is correct. They said, because I wasn't here, as well as the other issue apparently was amenities, that the house didn't, not the house, that the neighborhood didn't have enough amenities. And I actually did a little research on that. I know the walking score for Trails End is only a 13, but Curville in itself, the average house in Curville is only a 28. So Curville is not a very friendly walking community. You do need a car. So I didn't feel like, you know, on that point, that I should be penalized.
And a couple of the Planning Commissioners did voice concern that the applicant was not there.
At the what?
That the applicant was not there.
Okay.
Some cases, when the applicant was not present, the Planning Commission tabled it until the next meeting.
Okay.
In this case, they just voted, or made the motion to deny.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to add a couple of things, is that, one, Curville's pretty small. It's only a five to 10-minute drive anywhere, really, to get to any amenity.
And that, too.
And, and I don't think it's fair, just my perspective, for an applicant to be penalized, simply because they didn't appear, rather than on the merits of your application, because that's what submitted to them. It's not a requirement for you to appear before P&amp;Z, and it's happened before, though, that's ultimately their choice, and we've had multiple appeals. Also, I don't want you to, there's no reason for you to apologize, you're not wasting our time, this is our job, and we set aside a time to do this, and so, but I appreciate you going through the process.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, did we close the public hearing?
Go ahead and close it.
We'll close the public hearing at 6:55 if we didn't. All right, do we have, yes, I think we did. Do we have a motion?
I move we adopt Resolution Number 79-2022.
Do we have seconds?
Second.
All in favor, right hand please, and it passes unanimously. All right, we have finished all of the short-term rentals for approval. We move on to 6A.
Ordinance Number 2022-32. An ordinance annexing a tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Curville, Texas. Such property making up approximately 11.93 acres and generally located south of the intersection of State Highway 27 and Colvin Ranch Road, more commonly known as 5269 State Highway 27. Such property more specifically described in this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as an industrial and manufacturing IM zoning district, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We don't have any citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
And Drew, we'll have you talk. What we're going to do, counsel, if you will approve, we will do 6A, which is annexing for this property. Then I would like to pull 10A, because it also pertains to this property, but it has to do with utilities. So we'll do one, and then the other, if you guys are okay with it.
That works.
Okay, very good. Drew?
Thank you, ma'am. This property does not have any zoning because it is in the county, outside of the city limits, adjacent to the city limits, as you can see on the map here. It is part of Strategic Catalyst Area Number 11, which focuses on the airport and Highway 27. And this area is entitled, or recommended for heavy commercial and industrial, obviously taking care of sites located on the riverside. This property does not abut the river, but abuts the sand quarry to the south of it that abuts the river. The properties around it are zoned IM or PD for industrial uses on both sides, and then, of course, across the street, across Highway 27 is the airport. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually reviewed this in August. The applicant requested a delay for the public hearings for City Council as they were working through some of their other design and construction processes. Now, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend the case for approval with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, counsel, any questions on the annexation? Of Drew.
Annexation of Drew.
Okay. At 6:58, we will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? At 6:58, we will close the public hearing. Do we have any questions whatsoever from anyone? No comments? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance Number 22-32 on first reading.
Second.
Second.
And all in favor, right hand please, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, all right, we'll jump to 10A. Shall I?
Consider a request for the grant of a major waiver of the requirement within the city subdivision code, Chapter 82, Code of Ordinances, Section 82-50, for the extension of utilities to the property line. The property being an 11.93-acre proposed lot addressed as 5269 Highway 27, and generally located on Highway 27 at Colvin Ranch Road East. Applicant is the Ingram Ready Mix Number 10. And we do not have any citizen speaker signed up.
Okay, Drew?
This is a request from the property owner and their representation to not extend utilities to the south. They would be connecting to water and sewer along this property line on the backside of Fox Tank, and they would be required to extend at least to the adjacent property owner. Another applicant's representative is here, and they can go into further details based on that. Based on our code and the way our systems are built out, staff recommends that the waiver not be approved, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the applicant gives their presentation.
Okay. All right, would the applicant like to come to the mic?
Martin, can you change PowerPoints, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is James McKnight. I'm here representing the property owner and applicant for this request. There you go. So, as Drew pointed out, this property is really about development. This request is about development. We're here to develop this property, this 11.9 acres for a concrete batch plant, Ingram Ready Mix, and to do that, obviously, we need to plat. And we've already done the annexation and the zoning part that you just took care of, and now to do the plat, we have to abide by all those rules. This is an industrial area, and these are the utilities that you're, that are on the ground right now. The blue is the water, green is for the sewer, and our request, or the city's request as part of the plat, is to extend those lines across our property to the quarry property to our south. This is the proposed plat that we have so far. Those dotted lines are the easements that we're actually proposing in lieu of having to construct and extend the utilities. We are offering to just put the easements in the ground, or on the plat, to allow future development for those to be extended later. And the reason for that is because the property to our south is already developed as a sand quarry. We're not dealing with a property that is undeveloped. We're the ones developing. The quarry to the south is already developed. When you're looking at a waiver, these are the things that the council really needs to consider, and I want you to keep in mind, as we go through some of the items about a waiver, is that the hardship of the applicant asking for the waiver, but also the proposed use and the existing uses in the area. And I think that's really important for this industrial area. It's also the effects of the waivers on health, safety, and convenience. So when I'm going through the next steps of what you look at to approve a waiver, just, I want you to keep these things in mind. So the first criteria, I'm not going to read all that, but the first criteria is essentially, will this result in an unnecessary hardship for the applicant, and/or will it, will any of those following four items pertain to us? So the hardship for us is really about our topography. That's the unique feature for this property, is that our property is higher, the quarry behind us is much lower. That causes a real challenge for us in extending those utilities. But it's also about enabling the most efficient use of land, because this entire area is an industrial area, and the subdivision code is really about making things harmonious. It's about developing so that everybody around there can develop together in the most consistent, appropriate way. And that's actually what we're doing. We're developing a concrete batch plant in an industrial area next to a sand quarry. So we're the ones that are coming in and trying to develop, and that's what we really want to push forward. Some of the other hardships that we're talking about is that we don't know what is going to be developed on that property after it's a quarry. Right now, it is being developed as a quarry, sand and gravel, but we don't know what's coming after that. And we wouldn't be able to anticipate the size of a lift station, which would be required here, to do that. And, as I said before, this is already an industrial area, so we're actually preserving that use. This is a diagram showing the challenges of that topography. On the bottom, it's a little hard to see, but what it's showing is from north to south, the extension where we're asked to be, extend our utilities, would actually drop down about five to six feet, maybe more, in trying to extend the sewer. The sewer would have to go uphill, so it's not appropriate for gravity. We'd have to, for gravity line, we'd actually have to build a lift station. We have no idea what kind of lift station, what kind of develop would be there. So it really is building a lift station for no reason at this point, especially because the quarry's already been operating and doesn't have this utility now. Why does it need? This is an aerial showing where that line would be, and how, it's a short line across, but it is, it is a significant drop for us. The next criteria is about detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. This property, the quarry property our south, in little need of water, it has access to a water well, it's been operating without the connection so far, so we don't see the need at this moment. Insulation of water line, at this point, would create this dead-end main, because they're not, wouldn't be connecting to it. So you'd have a water line that just collected water that would need to be blown out periodically because it wouldn't be connected to anything. But we're still providing the easement on the property in case there ever were future needs. This is showing, again, aerial, a larger view of the quarry and how it's being used and developed at the moment. And the last criteria is about the effect it has on preventing orderly subdivision of the land. So one really important part about this, the quarry property already has direct access to the right-of-way. It's part of a larger tract. This is part of a larger tract that actually does connect. Our 12 acres used to be part of the entire tract. It was 172 acres originally. They sold us the 12. The reason they sold us that portion to the north is because they still had access on the southern end. If they need utilities to develop that property, they have the ability to do it now. They can extend themselves through their own property. They don't need us to extend utilities through our property. That's typically how it's done. There's a, if you have access to the road, utilities are there, you, the developer, go and connect to it. So if future development happens on that property, they would be responsible to do that, and they have the access for it. This is, this is showing the Kerr County appraisal, just because, part of what the problem, I think, here is because it's two tax parcels. And the reason it's two tax parcels is because the deed was listed as two abstracts. But if you look at this deed, it is one tract. It was 172 acres, it's all one property, it's not two. It was sold as one, and then that 172 acres was then subdivided with 12 acres to us. So all of that property is one, and has direct access to the street. So all of that together, my conclusion is basically that we fit the definition of granting a waiver in this case. There are special circumstances. It would alleviate the unnecessary hardship to us, the applicant. It would not be detrimental to the public's health, safety, and welfare, because the affected property has access and doesn't need those utilities at the moment, anyway. And it wouldn't prevent orderly subdivision, because, in the city, because future access is already extended and available by our easement. So that's my conclusion. Everything is there. I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Can I go back to the point that you made? I want to clarify your statement on the property owner, that they own the rest of the property? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
If you can go back to that map that you had?
Yes, this is all one property.
So your argument, or your reason, is you shouldn't need to do anything else there because the property owner already has infrastructure, and if they want to extend to the rest of their own property, they can do that themselves, and you don't need to provide that to them?
They have access to the infrastructure right now, yes.
They have access, but they haven't, they haven't.
They haven't done it, no, because they're using it as a quarry at the moment. But, for instance, if they were annexed in the city, wanted housing development, something later down the line, they have access to them, pull utilities like we did.
Right.
What is the distance that, that you would need to, what, and I, we may have, you may have said that, and I missed it. How far would it be for extending property, utilities there?
The distance that you'd have to pull that line.
Roughly about 350 feet.
Okay.
I have a question for Stan, I have a couple of questions for Kate. To confirm, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead. No, 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 I wasn't.
So to confirm what was said here, the applicant would have to provide a lift station to drive the utilities this distance?
I just have to defer to Stuart on this one.
Would you like a presentation, or do you want me to just answer questions?
I just want your words.
Because we've gone over this with the developer a few different times, and we've talked about it a number of different ways. I can either go kind of point by point of our discussion from the others, or I can just answer your specific question.
My specific question, yeah.
So the question of the lift station is, no, we would not require them to build a lift station right now, because we do not know the future use of the property. However, they're going to build infrastructure over the top of these driveways and roads that are going to cost the next developer more money to dig up and remove, to put the new water and sewer line in when they are ready to develop.
Go back again? Say that, say.
Say that again.
So if, if we just accept easements from them and not require them to put the utilities in, they're going to do improvements on the property. They're going to build roads, and they're going to build driveways. Those improvements are going to cost the next developer when they actually do put the lines, and they got to dig all that stuff up to put the lines under it. Those improvements are going to cost the next developer when they actually do put the lines, and they got to dig all that stuff up to put the lines under it. And so, part of the reasoning for the city to say, hey, every time a development comes along, we want you to extend to and through your property is for the next person. So, they don't incur costs that shouldn't be incurred by them. It should be incurred by the developer that's developed their piece of property.
So, when you're looking at the development, and you're looking at the property, and the adjoining property owner does have access to the roadway and kind of around that, do developers tend to want to drag their utilities underneath the road? Or do they want to... I don't know the answer to that.
So, like the map that y'all have on the board right there in front of you, so he says about 300 feet that they were asking them to extend it. The next developer, if he develops this piece of property without crossing their piece of property, we're going to expect them to drag the utilities down Highway 27 about 900 feet. All on their cost, because this developer said, hey, it doesn't make sense to us. It's a financial burden to us to do this. So, in lieu of 200 or 300 feet, it's now 900 foot to the next person.
Do you have a map that indicates where they would have to put infrastructure in and what they're not wanting to do? To kind of give us a visual?
So...
Just use that one. You should be able to use the pointer on there. You can use the mouse.
With the mouse, yeah.
Martin, can you switch back to the other PowerPoint?
There we go. Thank you, sir. So, what we're asking them to extend is from the water, this is the water, the next line will be the sewer. But we're asking them to connect onto these water system and bring it just to the end of their property, just outside of their property. So, basically, across this piece here. This here, going across Fox Tank, the way it was served originally, before this piece of property was purchased, this was all one tract. It had this very long kind of panhandle, or flagpole, if you will. It came up here, and the property touched water and sewer. And so, it was served by our standards. The whole, it was all one piece of property, and we said, you're served. You can go get water and sewer without crossing anybody. Now that this development has come along, they've kind of incorporated this panhandle into their piece of property. And so, we're saying, in order for this piece of property to be served and have access to it, we expect you to extend both water and sewer through your property to the next piece of property, so it can be developed.
Do you have...
Does that answer the question?
Is there a ballpark figure for what that, what it would cost, putting in a lift station that would take care of the situation?
Again, we wouldn't require a lift station, because it's a valid point. They don't know what the future is going to hold. They do need access across there. We've told them, hey, put in utility, or a wastewater system where we can get under the roads, put in the pipe, maybe a forced main that's the size that we can serve that in future development. The same argument was made when this piece of property came sale the first time, is we're never going to do anything but a sandlot here. That's all we're going to do is sell, sell sand off of it. And now, two years later, Ingram has come along and wanted, which is a beautiful use of the piece of property. I'm not... It just, things happen that aren't foreseen right now. And so, as that, we make people bring their utilities as they develop.
But you're saying, right now, you would not require that lift station?
I would not require a lift station, but they need access to the sewer main.
Access, okay.
And they, we would like for them to have the gravity, or the sewer, not gravity, but sewer line in the ground. So, the new roads that they're building, they're going to build roads for cement trucks, and they're going to be very substantial roads. It's going to be very nice. We don't want the next developer to have to cut them or undermine any of their operations while they're putting this new water or wastewater system in. So, we would like them to do that now.
And I do appreciate you're putting in good roads there. Thank you for, that's wonderful.
And actually, for the, for the infrastructure that we're putting on our property, where the drive comes across where the easement would cross, my understanding is that we would have a sleeve underneath it.
Yeah, we have, we have a proposed carrier pipe, which is...
Can you move to the mic just a little bit? Thank you.
We have a proposed carrier pipe, which is a larger pipe. If the forced main's a one-inch main, we're going to put a six-inch carrier pipe under the road, so you would dig down, expose that pipe, and you'd have access under the pavement without having to tear up the pavement. But, like he's saying, with the forced main, we don't know what sizes. Is it a one-inch, a two-inch, a four-inch? So, I don't want to put a pipe in the ground that's going to be the wrong size. I don't have a problem putting a carrier pipe that would allow, if somebody does develop the sand pit, we want them to have that, the easiest possible route. But what we just don't want to do is build infrastructure that's useless and cost us money to build, and then the end user doesn't use it. And that's the same thing with the water. We don't have a problem giving an easement. We have the ability to give an easement parallel to the east property line, which would not go under the road. It would allow straight access through the site parallel to the road. So, we would not have, or the sand pit in its future development would not have to go under the pavement to tie into the water. And as you can see on the plat that we showed, we are proposing easements, so they would have the access of the land to put in the facilities. We just don't want to build them. Another concern with the water is having a 200 or 300-foot dead-end main. That water can go stagnant, and then it creates a possible point of contaminant for the public water system. That's the real concern of, we build a line, it sits here, somebody has to go out here and flush it, or you have a potential for a, you know, a health, safety issue. So, it's not that we want to do it just because we're being cheap and we don't want to do it. We're trying to be the best stewards of the land and do a responsible development and still not shortchange our neighbors.
And I think it's important to point out, again, that typically, when we're talking about extending utilities down to the property next to you or across for their development, again, it is developed. I know it looks undeveloped, because it's just sitting there, but that is a, that is a development. Having a sand and quarry pit there is a use. It's on the property already. So, we're extending utilities for this future use, but I don't understa, it's outside the city. It's not zoned. It's being used currently, is being planned to be used for a very long time. I, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't match the same reasons for needing to extend. And that's when, again, when you look at the subdivision code as a whole, it's about creating this harmonious development around all of them. What we're proposing, I believe, does that. We're developing where there already is a development. And I don't think that extending utilities is required.
You're talking about opening in some infrastructure pieces that would allow for future development if it were to occur. Is that, is that within the plat or within your, any documentation proposal, anything like that? Or is that just what you're telling us right now?
It'll be part of the separate submittal for the subdivision plat. It'll accompany the plat when they want to see construction documents, because we still have to design and lay out the water through our site. So, it'll be shown on the water plans for our site.
But we don't, we don't approve plats, as counsel, right? So, we're approving, if we approve, we're approving your word right now. We don't have any, anything in...
The approval or denial of this waiver will help them finish their set of design plans.
Sure.
Because it's going to change the rules for what they're going to design.
Okay.
If they're not required to extend this part of the utility, obviously, they won't design that. They'll show the easements, the topography, and that carrier pipe. If they are required to extend it, then they have to finish that design and make that design. So, we don't have a submittal yet, because they don't have this approval yet.
Right. I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, the reality is that we're, we're not, they're not subject to that at this point, if they say they're going to do something.
Right. So, that could be part of this approval. Staff would review that on the civil infrastructure plans and the plat, as those go to staff and the planning commission.
And then, can I ask you, as, you know, Stuart, I've heard, do either of you or anyone else on staff, since y'all are requesting this denial, have some other items that need to be considered for, for this, for your recommendation?
Stuart, I just have one question for you. On the property, just to the north of this, there's a sewer main that goes to the edge, the corner of this property, directly adjacent. And that property has a manhole that I don't believe is actually utilized by that property, but was requested and was constructed essentially for the use of this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which one are you looking at?
Trying to get it to the property directly to the north. It's got a several hundred-yard extension all the way from the highway to this property. That property owner was expected to put that infrastructure in, put in that manhole serving this property.
So, this is the line that Mr. Hoppy's talking about, right here? When this piece of property was developed, they said, okay, you have to extend this all the way down. Very similar to the water lines and the sewer line. You saw the water lines earlier. They're saying, you know, the extension of the water lines is going to cause an undue hardship on the water system. We have them all over town. It's our process. It's the way we grow our utility.
For the sewer system, oh, go ahead if you're good.
I'm using the mouse. So, what do you wish, when you go back on your mouse, but Drew? We're using the other, the other device here instead of a mouse, because it doesn't afford. Okay. Thank you, sir. Sorry. So, there we go. So, on the water, on the, this is the water system. You'll see the dead-end lines there on Highway 27, then also down by Fox Tank. And there's dead-end lines everywhere. That is a true statement. They're not, they're not lying to us or being deceitful. Or, dead-end water lines is not something that's desirable, but it is what it takes to extend the system and build our system. And so, we have them everywhere. We have blow-offs on, and we know how to handle them, and we know how to address that. Topography, their sewer line, they're right. We're in the hills. I mean, not everything is gravity sewer. We've had, we've learned how to overcome that, and we'd like to, we would implement those same protections that we give other developers to these as well. We're not asking for something different.
When you talk about the dead ends, like you said, we have a lot others in the city. Is that the city's responsibility to maintain that, or is that the property? Okay, it's a, is that going to put an undue hardship on the city if we were to go move forward, and they have to put that dead in there? Is that a hardship on us?
No, like I said, there's two examples even just on this little, on this picture here, which is a very small section of our water system. There's two dead-end mains there. We have to blow them off occasionally, keep the water fresh in there. And so, it's something we're accustomed to.
And I think I'm just a little bit confused, and I apologize to council and everybody else if I haven't gotten this and on the same page. But, I keep hearing that the concern is you don't want to put it all the way to where the sand is, but I haven't seen any proposed lines that are going to go all the way far that south.
That's right. It's just to the edge of their property.
To the, and that's to the right of it, right? To near like 110?
Basically where that red line crosses the road.
So, there's, nothing's going to go down to that sand quarry?
No, it's just across their property. They're only responsible across their property, and that's to right here.
So, then to y'all, can you explain to me then, because I, that resolves my confusion. I keep hearing that the concern is y'all don't want to go all the way down south and have to put it there, because that's, that land is developed as a sand quarry, but you don't have to go all the way down there. You're just going to the right. So, can you help clarify what your concern is, or why you'd rather not do it?
The first concern was about the topography and that, even that red line that you talked about where we have to extend to, that is where that would drop to, is in that area. That was what that drawing showed, was that it dropped that much, just to that area. But it's also, it's extending, yes, this. But when we're talking about extending down to the sand, I don't mean literally down to where the quarry area is. I mean down to the quarry property. So, we're extending, we're being asked to extend sewer and water utilities to the quarry property, but for what purpose? They're already developed as a sand quarry that's being operated currently. You see this picture here of the utilities extended to our property line, correct, and now we're going to develop. Theirs is developed, so it's not the same situation.
I got you. What happens with the property on the right is that their responsibility at that point, like 110, that property, is that their responsibility to connect?
The utilities further to the east?
I was going to say, is that, they'll just use that, right? So, they won't even need, any property on the right doesn't need to worry about these extensions. We're only talking about everything else below it.
These properties can access this line.
Right, okay. That's what I thought. Okay. Clarifies a lot. Thank you.
One of, one of my concerns is, or maybe it's not a concern, but one of my thoughts is that the utilities came in, and they're there for you. They were brought across the other property. There's a part of me that says it would, that that's a, it's a, it's a good practice. It takes care of it for the next person, and who knows what could happen to the quarry? I mean, that could change in a year. It could change in 15 years. It, there's no, no way of knowing. But, but it just seems like it's a, it's a good practice to take care of the next person and, or whatever may, whatever may be happening at that property the next time. So, I have a little concern about, about that. I, I just think it's a good thing to do.
Well, yeah, your statement's not 100%. The utilities were not brought just for us. Fox Tanks is using the utilities currently. The water was never extended to us. We're actually having to get the water and extend it to our site through Fox Tanks. And the sewer is actually serving his building in the back, and that we are actually having to go extend our sewer onto his property and tie into that manhole. So, we actually don't have the, the utilities brought to us. The only utilities that we currently have flowing through our site is what's shown on the map up there along the right-of-way up by the highway. So, it's not like we're, you know, oh, we were given a whole bunch of utilities. We're having to go get them a little bit and bring them into our site. And then, we're trying to match and go, we don't want to shut our neighbor out and say, we're not going to give you any utilities, but we want to give you utilities that make sense. And when they don't have a water demand now, going, we're going to give you water based on something that we, I guess, we estimate, or we try to make a stab at, we can do that. The sewer, you know, I think we're on an agreement. We can't build a sewer line. We can leave some infrastructure in place to make it easy, that if somebody does come in here, they can develop. And that's why we're trying, we're not trying to get out of building utilities. We're trying to build something that's reasonable, instead of just, here's water and sewer, have at it.
I think what the mayor was getting at, her point, though, is that when that property was developed, the lines, the property owner was required to bring that infrastructure down to that property line, close to y'all at least, so y'all could tie into it.
It was already there before the division.
So, and I will just clarify, there are utilities at 5275, Highway 27, which are adjacent to this property and have been drugged to this property, the water in particular.
When we keep talking about the property owner south, well, before I get to that, y'all did say y'all were willing to put in an easement, right? But it is my understanding, and staff, help me out here if I'm wrong, but if the water lines and the wastewater mains cross your property, you do have to put an easement in anyways. Is that correct? So, either way, we're going to have to have an easement.
Correct. And we don't have any problem with the easement. We're proposing the easements.
Okay. And we keep talking about the property down south. Have we had discussions with them? Have we reached out to them to see, is this going to be a major concern? Let's just say, for some reason, council approves this, the waiver, is there a concern on their part that they're not going to be able to use that? Have we heard from them? Because we keep talking about them.
Yeah, we had conversations about three years ago with that property owner. That may have changed ownership interest since then. I know it was a multi-individual partnership. However, at that time, there wasn't a plan for a concrete batch plant either, and that has changed use and purpose.
Yeah.
And so, you know, at the time, there was conversation about that being a quarry for a period of time, and then eventually converting to a different use, which would be compatible with future land use plans. So, time will tell.
Have you reached out to the property owner and told them that you're planning, you would hope not to do that?
Yeah, they haven't expressed any desire for any water or sewer utilities.
And when you say that, is that because they just haven't responded to y'all at all, or because y'all did have conversations and they just didn't?
Well, being how they're a sand pit, they operate under a different TCUQ permit with the state, and they are contracted with a certain amount of pumping from their well. And so, they're in their own little category that we've just never co-mingled or tried to revise or change.
Okay.
Or even discussed.
Got you. Thank you.
But I guess there's no compromise with this. It's either or, isn't it?
Yeah, we either require them to make the extensions, or we do not. I guess that's the question here today.
Might be that they, you require them put in those sleeves. Require them to put in the sleeves for both the sewer and the water. Is that a possibility?
The water really doesn't need a sleeve, because we know what size. There's a minimum line size. The city says, if you're going to develop a piece of property, this is what you... The city says if you're going to develop a piece of property, this is what you have to do and it kind of outlines what it is. On the sewer side, we were, we are willing to work with them because it can't be gravity sewer. Um, and so we said, well, let's, let's go ahead and let, allow y'all to do a force main, put a sleeve under your road so we can get through that. Um, but since then they've come forward with a waiver for the whole utility. That's the question today.
Talk a little bit more about the nine hundred feet.
Okay, um, they only have to help me from their driveway, but I think your driveway is right here. Is that right? You're a little closer to the screen than I am. Is that where your driveway is? So from here?
That's the sand pits driveway.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the end of this water line right here for this, this development. Actually, I don't think it's a combination, two different PowerPoints that we're using. So from here to the sand pits driveway out to Highway twenty seven is right here. So that's a roughly eight hundred and eighty feet just from scaling it off on my computer just a few minutes ago. So I'm rounding that to nine hundred feet that they would have to extend it down Tech Dot right away just to get to their site. And then they would have to bring that water line all the way down their road, um, to the sand pit down there.
And so what does that do to the value of their property?
Well, it makes their infrastructure, when they do develop at some point in the future, um, a lot more expensive because they, now they have nine hundred feet of water and nine hundred feet of wastewater to be in there.
That's what I needed to know.
Mr. Garcia asked earlier if we talked to developer and Mr. Y was exactly right. We haven't talked to him recently, but when this came in the first time when they were doing a sandlot, uh, they told us, you know, this, this land is valuable and sometime in the future it will be something, uh, once it will reclaim it, we're storing all the topsoil. They're going to do something else with it in the future. So we anticipate it being something else.
Can I summarize that? This is an ask we make of every developer.
Yes, sir.
But the developer is saying there are special circumstances with this particular law.
Yes, sir.
That's why they're requesting a waiver. Thank you.
I think your use is perfect. I mean, that's, I'm delighted with that. I just wish there was some way to compromise here with that. What needs to be done?
Well, I've already seen one compromise. They say they would be forced to have a, uh, a lift station. You're saying they wouldn't be required.
That's right.
One super big expense. They say that they're willing to put in a sleeve underneath their, uh, the, the driveways or roadways for the trucks, which is a step forward anyway.
For the wastewater side, yes, sir.
And I, I would ask if that could be a condition to approval, whether that has to be part of the, the, um, construction plans.
You're, you're dealing with people who are not engineers.
No, I, I mean legally, if, if, to approve, uh, a waiver, but with a condition that they said the construction plans include a sleeve under the road.
When you say sleeve under the road, it's just under the road, not to the property line.
Correct.
Under the, uh, any, it would be any, um, hard services that we would put like a road.
And does that resolve the concern of what size that they would have to put down there? That does? Okay.
It would for us.
Okay. Because you were saying you don't know it right now. So as long as that's there, that concern's resolved. Okay.
So I think if we would do a six inch sleeve under the road, that would be sufficient under the road and then the, the new force main could fit through it.
So.
We don't want to design it today. I mean, we, we can though. I mean, I know y'all have a lot more on your agenda than this.
Do we?
But at the same time, if we were going to put in some of these conditions, I mean, I know, I realize it doesn't have to be six or eight or ten, but, but we would need to put that into the conditions.
Ma'am, can I ask a question, ma'am? I'm sorry. I'm not an engineer. I don't want to be an engineer. I have a brother who's an engineer. Definitely don't want to be an engineer. Is there any way you two, you two groups can get back together and come back to us with something in the middle? I don't want to sit up here and try to design a compromise when I don't understand half the things you're saying to me. Is there any way y'all could come together? Table this for now. Y'all come together and try to figure out a way that satisfies the expansion of the system at their expense, but solves the problem of they can't design something for a future they can't predict. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. And I thought we had adequately done that and apparently I hadn't, we haven't gotten there. So they came to before with a waiver.
Well, I don't think I'm qualified to make that resolution.
I'm, I'm willing to try again though. I mean, if y'all say go back to staff and take another swing at it, we'll take another swing at it.
We can make a decision today and no one will be happy. Okay? I can guarantee that. Or you can get together and come up with a solution that's engineering right, but also expands our system.
And also protects the neighboring property.
Agreed. So.
So just to, just to clarify where staff's position was, um, the compromise was not requiring the lift station, only putting the water line in and providing the sleeve for the wastewater line. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's not within this waiver request?
The waiver request is simply not to install any of the infrastructure and only to provide an easement.
So those conditions were put before they submitted their waiver or that, that agreement? General agreement between the two was in place before this waiver came to us?
That's what's been expressed by staff.
Is that what you understood as?
No, it wasn't. I, and also it, it just needs to be, as long as it's clear that the code says this is what's required. As long as staff says for us, this compromise saying with a sleeve, no list station, meets the code as it's written, then we can do it. That's the reason we come forward with a waiver is because the code is a little stringent. It says you have to extend. And so we come to you to say, we're willing to do a compromise because I thought that was the only way to do it. But if staff can interpret the code to say, we can compromise within that realm, then I.
I see what you're saying. So in order to make that compromise, you'd have to go against our current subdivision code, which would require a waiver, which can, a major waiver and per our subdivision code can only be given by city council.
That's correct.
So in order to meet that compromise, you have to do the major waiver.
That's right.
You have not asked for that waiver. You've asked for a complete waiver.
So this is what the major waiver is.
Instead of the waiver, the compromise waiver, you're asking for a cart launch waiver.
Correct.
So. The, the, what staff said tonight, is that agreeable to you as far as your design? Does that meet the requirements that you were hoping to achieve with what, with what Stuart has said as far as what can be done to accommodate you guys in this situation?
I, I don't know. I, I think, I mean, having.
Do you need some more time?
Well, part of.
We're not the owners. We're not the ones writing the checks. So we have to consult with the owner. The, I guess, I guess the main issue is the cost of the water line that runs to nowhere. That, that was the.
That's a common ask of all developers. You knew that when you started with developers.
Can we, can we table this? You go back to the owners, talk with them. If there needs to be more conversation here, that can happen.
Mayor, just to thought, you do have a second reading, uh, on the annexation, uh, at your next meeting. Uh, and so.
We could act on it then.
Certainly could table this item until then.
Until then.
They could consult with their owners and hopefully better understand, uh, the compromise which has been expressed before and have an answer for you.
Okay.
Can, I have one final question. If we were to approve this waiver with those conditions or compromise, is there a way for us to do that, um, city attorney, just to make sure that that is what they go forward with and both parties understand that? In, in, in the frame of a motion or whatever we do, just so we're all on the same page that that's what's going to be done and expected of.
I think getting to a compromise would actually mean that you all would deny the waiver and then they would work with staff on some reasonable compromise that, you know, meets their, their needs and, and staff's needs.
We would, we would deny the, the present request of a waiver, of the cart launch waiver.
Right, but I, I do think, let me just say that I do think, I mean, this is an inefficient process, right? We're, we're, we're seeing that right now. It, it, because of the issues that have come up and we don't, I certainly don't want to think about designing the line sitting here and you all don't either. So I think the, the better practice would be to table it, come back in December. That'll give staff and the developer a, a month to figure something out.
Please be advised that if, if a compromise is not met, I'm fairly certain your waiver will be denied.
Noted.
Okay, do we have, uh, let's see, do we need a public, yes?
Can I ask a question? So what are we preparing? What document do, are we going to show the city to create the agreement that this is what?
That's something you need to discuss with city staff.
Yeah.
Right.
That's not our department.
Okay.
Yep.
You need a motion to table, ma'am?
Uh, I think we do. Do we need a, uh?
No, this is not a public hearing.
Okay, so we do. We need a motion to table.
I'll move to table this item until our next regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor, right hand, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your patience and, uh, uh, hope we can reach a good compromise.
See you next month.
Okay, that puts us at seven A and, um, I think we will go ahead and do it now. I was thinking we would take a break. Now let's do it. Go ahead with it. Yes. Okay, seven A.
Report from short term rental committee in accordance with resolution number fifty five dash twenty twenty two. Committee Chair Lang Guerrero, and we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, early evening. Uh, man, you guys have a hard job. All right. My name is Lang Guerrero. I live at three oh seven Lakewood Drive in Kerrville, Texas. I'm here today representing the short term rental committee, uh, formed in late September. The committee of ten members was comprised of two council members and a diverse group of citizens representing all points of views regarding short term rentals. Can't seem to stop talking about short term rentals. Want to thank you, uh, thank the following committee members for who selflessly did it, donated their time and efforts to completing this draft ordinance. Kim Richards, Jim Cains, Linda Stone, Councilmember Clarkson, Gail Wright, Councilmember Garcia, our unofficial paralegal, Carrie Wilt, Robin Perrin. And I also want to express my sincerest gratitude to the city staff for their utmost professionalism and patience. They are truly the best. I want to thank Mike Hayes, Julie Behrens, Michael Horns, Kim Meisner, Drew Paxton, Guillermo Garcia, especially Keisha Francina and Shelley McCannon. I also like to thank our special guests who came to our meeting, uh, at just a moment's notice to answer a few questions. Uh, Chief McCall and Eric Maloney. And finally, I'd like to thank Maggie McGee for setting the course for our group and making it easy for me to step in and continue the work. We are all thinking about her and hoping for a speedy recovery, even though she is someone who cannot stay idle for long. Kerrville's a special place. It's the best city and the best state and the best country. And you have to think about that. We have a pretty good deal here. It's only getting better. Um, we are a rare community where simpler times can still be found. We need to protect and cherish that value. That deep sense of community is what makes us strong and unique. The roots of this ordinance can be found within the comments from the dozens of sticky notes from Mayor Eichner's town hall in August. I've read every one of them. Um, our committee had five two hour meetings overall in short. In this draft ordinance, we clarified the short term definition, removed bed and breakfast from the ordinance. We created a more efficient and self-inspection requirement by removing the direct inspection process, which lowered our costs to the SDR owner and resource requirements to the city staff. Originally, the original fee was about five hundred dollars and that's an honest figure. That was literally taking the time it took, uh, for the chief, the fire chief and different people, uh, to process that payment. But the city time and time again, uh, would come back and, and work with the group to make it, uh, easier for the short terminal. So we came up with a self-inspection requirement. And I want to also point out today that the checklist that was come up, that was created by the city is literally one page long. It's very small. And this is very unusual for government to have a small, one page document. And, uh, I think generally speaking, the short term rental owners are solid people. We have a good community. We're not, um, we're not, we're not seeing really any kind of problems with the short term rentals other than just people don't like them in certain places. And that's, that's to be understood because there's a lot of value in our neighborhood and in our community. So when we strike, uh, some kind of changes in those neighborhoods, people do get a little upset. We've also clarified the outdoor sign restrictions. We've confirmed an occupants, occupancy limit, uh, for SDRs to be ten occupants. Now occupant, uh, is, you know, some of these words have multiple meanings depending on how you, you look at them. But an occupant is literally a person that spends the night at a short term rental. A person meaning a baby, a grandparent, a person. And so that's been confirmed and, and clarified. We created a fair escalation process for su- uh, suspension, revocation of permits that allows for quick punitive actions for serious safety issues or misrepresentations, but also a fair and balanced escalation, starting with a warning on to different fines, uh, for the short term, uh, rental owner. We added notification processes for potential compliance issues. Uh, we identified that renewal applications should be submitted fifteen days before the expiration date will be at the end of the year. And so that's pretty much the summary of, of the ordinance. It's been submitted. And I thought, uh, in the spirit of, um, getting along, I think after the town hall meeting, I think there was a lot of contentious, um, feelings, people upset. But, uh, the committee got together and they worked through their issues and it was really a model, uh, for any kind of major issue. And I want to applaud the mayor for, for putting it together and making it happen. And what you have now is an ordinance based on, uh, both sides of, of the argument. And, uh, I think it's a pretty sturdy document. That's it. Should I go longer?
Thank you. Thank you so much for agreeing to take over in the middle. And, uh, thank you for all that you've done. And, uh, also thanks to all of the committee. Uh, does anyone have, uh, those of us who weren't there, questions? There were a couple of letters that we received, some, um, changes that people wanted to make with, related to the, the, uh, ten people limit.
That was not covered in what we were asked to do.
And I think we could talk about that when we, when the ordinance comes up. Okay. Would be more appropriate. Okay. Okay? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe, did you have anything?
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing Brenda said.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, they came in tonight.
Okay, let's proceed with.
Do you have two citizen speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do. That's right. John Perrin. Thank you.
I think we did it under the wrong one. I, I'm not sure. Is this the time to talk about the ordinance? Or is this just talking about?
Oh, this is just the presentation.
This was just a presentation.
I'm sorry. That was my fault.
That's okay. I have you down for eight A also.
Yeah.
Okay, so no speakers at this time.
Who's the other one? I think there were two.
Robin.
Me.
Yeah, so, okay, we shall move on to eight A. If you will read us in, please, Shelley.
Ordinance number twenty twenty two dash thirty and ordinance of mini chapter thirty, businesses of the city's code of ordinances. By adopting a new article six, short term rental units, require permitting and inspection for short term rental units containing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed two thousand, ordering publication, providing effective date and providing other matters related to the subject. We do have four citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you. Guillermo, take us away.
So I'm here just to answer any questions that you have in regards to the, the ordinance itself. Unless you want to go line item by line on them, but I figured just open up to questions that you may have, uh, about the ordinance itself.
All right. Would you guys like to?
I don't want to cut that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Brenda, do you want to add any questions, anything you want to bring up?
Um, I don't want to go line item by line item, but I did on page three of fourteen where, uh, it says designated operator means an operator of a.
A, yeah.
Short term rental unit who must be able to respond to a city employee or guest of a short term rental unit within a reasonable amount of time from such contact. What does that mean?
So the, the committee felt that it, uh, uh, putting a time limit, uh, would not be fair. That they felt that the short term rental owners will have representatives that are going to be near to the area or given that they will be out of town, will give them an opportunity to address whatever issue comes up in a timely manner. And so they didn't want, they didn't feel like they needed to put a time limit on that.
Okay, so, so define reasonable then?
Well, reasonable could be a lot of things, but, uh, essentially, uh, what we're expecting them is to, uh, be responsive. And if there is an issue that they get contacted immediately and. And if there is an issue, that they get contacted immediately and they address that issue in a timely manner. Reasonable can be...
Yeah. And I think part of it is, is it was the idea of what is the issue specifically? There's some issue, based on what issue it might be, reasonable may be considered different. I mean, if you, if you are having, you know, a water, you know, water main or something like that versus, you know, a trash can or, you know, there's just a different set of potential issues to be addressed and different times when they may...
Okay, so who, who makes that judgment call about what's reasonable? I mean, if it's a trash can issue and somebody doesn't respond for...
Well, depending on the situation. So if it's something that's on the weekend and they try to contact the owner, and if the owner is not available or hasn't been able to get in contact, then the property owner or the next-door neighbors, whoever's making the complaint, can always call the police department. And then the police department makes an investigation. And then from that standpoint, depending on the investigation, we would get involved from a code enforcement standpoint, but not till Monday or later on that evening, depending on the, on the severity of it.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the...
And I think something that, that helps us to, as we look at these things, that as time goes on, if, if there's a, a unit that continually has problems, these things are going to come out.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and, and so many of our units are part of Airbnb. And there's also, there's a survey, there's requirements, there's a lot that, that Airbnb requires. So I, I think that as time goes on, I mean, I think, and, and I don't want to make light of it, but...
Yeah, a living document that may be subject to changes down the line or amendments.
Yes.
Okay.
So I just think in all of these things, I think it's important to kind of keep that in mind. So I, I don't want to make light of it, but, yeah. So any, anyone else with any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
And it may not be just for you, it may also be for Kim and, and Roman. Where do we come up with the ten, the, the, the limit of ten people?
So the limit itself comes from the International Business Code. So it comes down to the definition of transient. I'm trying to get to my notes here. So it comes to the definition of transit, which basically states occupancy of a dwelling unit or sleeping unit for not more than thirty days. So all these units are basically transient in nature. And because of the fact that they have to pay hot tax, and remember, the only reason they have to pay hot tax is because of the stays that are less than thirty days. So basically, the IBC comes into play. And at that point in time, they're either grouped in R-one or R-three. And those, those specific codes basically say if you have occupants over ten, then the property needs to be sprinkled. So we decided to limit it to that ten number.
So it becomes a, a safe, a fire safety...
Yes, sir.
Because, because I had several emails this afternoon, and that was, I thought, a valid point. And I didn't understand where the number ten came from. So I think I do now. I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right. Then let's go ahead and open for our speakers. Sarah Lewis.
I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next.
John Perrin.
Madam Mayor, council, staff, I apologize for my appearance. I worked late today. I am an SDR owner. We ask that you would fix the occupancy to not limit it to ten because of the Zatari case. In this case, the SDR owners in the City of Austin sued the city, and our Attorney General, Ken Paxton, got involved as well. The Third Circuit Court of Appeals shot down several parts of Austin's SDR ordinance, in this case, the one involving ten as an occupancy limit, among other things like having weddings and congregating outside of an SDR in certain numbers. This case states that since SDRs are, quote, "residential in nature," unquote, and not businesses, and that Texas has, Texans have strong beliefs about their own property, their personal property rights, that the city could not come in and tell them how many people could come and stay at their private property. And the SDR owners won. The court stated that we have a, quote, "right to assemble," unquote, "for any and all reasons" in the federal and the Texas Constitution. So here is what the Austin, the City of Austin's SDR website now reads, quote, "Things to know about the Texas Third Court of Appeals' ruling and short-term rentals. Will Austin Code enforce, continue to enforce SDR occupancy limits? As a result of this ruling, Austin Code can no longer enforce SDR occupancy limits, neither internal nor external to a structure," unquote. Which brings me to my second point. This particular case also defined SDRs as residential use. We therefore ask that Kerrville put us in a category of our own in the city code. That way, the city cannot come back later and attempt to regulate SDRs as businesses because we are in the city code currently under businesses. I would also like to react, reiterate that in the beginning, the whereas statements need to be factual and not unnecessarily demonizing SDRs. Can we please put in a statement or some statements that are just generic-like? The city wanted to regulate the short-term rentals and make sure that the SDR guests and neighbors alike have some accountability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Robin Perrin.
As a, as a part of the committee that was doing this, I have a lot more respect for our city staff and, and putting up with all of us. But anyway, there, there were a couple of things that we were not allowed to touch as this committee, and the occupancy was one of them, the ten. And because he said International Business Code, but I think you meant International Building Code, right?
Yes, International Building Code.
Okay. So, so I, as my amateur sleuth, went, went to find this in the, in the code. And when you do, you have to pay a fee because cities actually have, and it's, I don't know, nine-hundred-and-sixty-three pages worth. And when you go in, there's all these things. I mean, there's so many things that have to do with it. It went, it went from the square footage and the da, 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 da. I'm not sure what would make Austin so much different than any other city, which now I, because I was so concerned about this particular number, I called the, and talked with the lawyer who did this Zatari case, who won this particular case. And I said, does, does, tell me, when you, when you look at the Tar, when you look at this Zatari, when you look at all these cases, am I wrong? Am I seeing this wrong? He said, no. So, so what I think the city is saying, if, if I'm not mistaken, is the building code of all of Kerrville, please tell me if I'm wrong, you're saying in the building code of all of Kerrville, we can never sleep more than ten people in our homes?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Okay, so we're saying...
You can sleep more than ten people as long as you fire sprinkle a building.
Okay. So, so then we have like a, a fire code come in. So, so what is it that Austin did that they just, that this, this Supreme Court case ended up, and, and General Pax, or, you know, Attorney General Paxton comes in? What is it that's so different that now they say that, that they have a requirement of no more than fifty people in a short-term rental? So I don't, I don't know what the difference is. This is what, this is what the lawyer who, who did the case told me personally. He said, believe me, it went round and round. And he said, this is what the, this case came out to be. So we have, um, one, one other thing before my time runs out. I want to talk about, you, you have us under businesses. And there are three separate cases that I just found as a layperson that say you can't put us in, in businesses, that we're residential in nature. And, and basically, all of this boils down to what you're doing in this house. So if you're conducting business in this house, it, it is a business house. And if you are conducting residential things like sleeping and eating, then you're a residential house. So the, the Texas Supreme Court says we are residential. So to put us under businesses in our city code is, is real problematic with us. And I, and I read the, I don't even know how to say this, Zigabey versus the property owner, owners. This went to the Supreme Court, the Tar versus, or Tar Timberwood HOA case went to the Supreme Court, and also the Zatari case. The guys, I didn't even read, I, I didn't even find this, but he told me personally it, it, that SDRs are not businesses in the Zatari case, and that, and that was already shown there. Anyway, he said otherwise, all long-term rentals would be a business also because you're, you know, making money out of people coming and renting your home. Anyway, I, I agree with the whereas statements. I feel like they need to be a little more generic instead of things like may nega, may negatively impact the neighborhood. I feel like, you know, short-term rentals are kind of put on the chopping block here with, you know, some kind of negative to start out with. Anyway.
Thank you.
Larry Howard.
Good evening. I'm Larry Howard, five oh three Oakland Hills. My only comment is to echo what they've already said, and that we should not be placed under the business section of the city's codes. We are residential in nature, stated by the courts. And please understand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any other comments or questions? Yes, Joe?
So the points that were made tonight, Larry and the parents, were these made during the committee meeting? Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
They were. And is the, the work we see here today, is this a result of a vote of the committee? Is this the work of that committee?
Councilman, to speak on, on behalf of my understanding of the committee, is that that was outside of our charge. Those items were not part of the charge that we were given. The charge was just on the actual regulation of short-term rentals, not on where it appears in the code, and not on, you know, not on, on the issues that, that have been raised tonight, which is why, why you don't have that, any kind of recommendation asked to those items from the committee.
Right. Because it was in the International Building Code? We felt it was a little bit out of our scope to go into that.
And then the other thing, the business, putting it under the, as a business under the code was beyond your...
Right. That was beyond our charge, too. Correct.
Yep.
It was raised in the meeting, but we didn't go any, into any discussions on it.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Brenda, any questions, comments?
We're gonna have to lean on you guys because you were there.
I, I would like to go towards that point about the chapter that we're putting this under. Is there any problem with creating just a new chapter dedicated to SDRs and not indicating it either on the residential or business and just make it its own chapter in our code?
It's a question for your city attorney.
Okay.
It's, it's put under the Chapter Thirty, you know, while it's, it, it, it's kind of this...
...fibrification, almost, it's a business?
It's a business, people are making money on it, right? That's conducted in a residential structure. And I think if you look at the, at the vast majority of cities, at least across Texas, that have adopted regulations such as these, which go toward the operation, I think you will find that they're in perhaps not a chapter called Business, but certainly in a chapter that deals with businesses, right? And so this is akin to our group homes, boarding home facilities, also conducted in residential structures, but also businesses.
Do you expect the Texas Legislature to pass any kind of legislation or clarification on these issues that might, that might lead us in a more, you know, we're, we're kind of in a gray area ourselves. We don't, we don't have that direct piece from them at this point. Do you expect there to be any regulation or consideration of any deregulation or anything?
You know, I, I think that there'll be bills that are filed. But I think it's, you know, as Mrs. Perrin referenced, certainly, there's a number of court cases that have occurred, there's some pending court cases. None, none of which, I believe, impacts the ordinance before you. You know, I continue to look at those cases and, and certainly the pending ones. You know, the legislature is always trying to kind of solve problems that they think are occurring at the local level. This is a, you know, some cities regulate these beyond what we're even considering doing, some cities don't. But I think you'll find that cities are wrestling with this issue, not only in Texas, but all over the country, just...
Now, tell him what the legislature might or might not do if it's...
Or legis, yeah.
All right. Are we ready for a motion, counsel?
I have one more question, the city attorney, I'm sorry. Would it, would it cause undue staff effort just to create a new chapter, not business, but short-term rental?
It wouldn't cause any sort of undue. You know, I don't, I don't have the, the chapters before me, but I, I just, I want to make sure that everyone's clear. I don't think that's against the law, against those cases, puts us in any legal jeopardy to put it in Chapter Thirty. I think that's the most appropriate place. But back to your question, it wouldn't cost us really anything to create a new chapter and a chapter heading and put this in there.
I would say I would look towards either that, its own chapter, or maybe if we can do something under zoning. I did look at a couple of cities. I know one was, uh...
This is clearly not zoning.
I was gonna say, this is not zoning at this time.
And so we, we do have zoning, right, Councilmember Garcia, which you all have adopted a meeting or two ago?
Right.
And that, of course, lends itself, per state law, you have to go through a public hearing, P and Z has to be involved with the recommendation. And so I want to be clear that this isn't zoning. This is, you know, operations that apply, or regulations that apply to the operation of an SDR.
I think I was looking at the city of, the only reason I said this because I was looking at the city of Austin's, and they have a land development chapter that leads into a zoning, a land development title that links into a zoning chapter that goes to a Use and Development Regulations subchapter. And then it has multiple things, ones residential uses, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals, and others. And so that, that's why I thought we could probably do that. If there's some way, if not, then that's fine. There was, there were a couple of things, I'll save the whereas clauses, but page three, I don't know if Councilmember Hughes meant to do this, but she stressed the word A. I do think operator of a short-term rental unit needs to be in there on page three. Going to, I'll save that one because that's discussion. On page six, under thirty-one seventy-six, it's just, I think we need to move, there's an and after subsection three. I think that just needs to go after section two. Three's the last one, so it'll be two and then three. And I guess I had, yeah, the other ones I had were going to be more discussion-based. It's on page five, section thirty-one seventy-four A. And it refers to the, the permit may be renewed by applying in accordance with section thirty dash one seventy-three. So that was something we discussed in our committee meeting, and I see a note from our city attorney on the side that says that the committee discussed whether this was the correct section reference. It is. If you don't mind explaining that, because I was looking at the section that currently refers to the section, the section for the permit application and review. We also have a separate section for the specific processes that they have to go through when they want to renew their permit, which is one eighty-three instead of one seventy-three. Because if we say that they're going to have to apply, they're going to have to follow those regulations, then I, I would just confuse, I think it just, it does need to be referenced to a different section. Does that make sense of...
I think the, I'm happy to look at it again. The intent with the renewal is you have to go through just the, the basic provision for applying for a permit. But to the extent that we have, that the ordinance is conflicted between one seventy-three and one eighty-three, I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay.
That was the, that, that's what I understand staff's intent was. You renew, you've got to go through the normal permit process.
Yes. Of course, because I think what the committee discussed is they wouldn't have to go all the way through the regular process. Instead, it would be more of like an update. You just ask a question, does any of your information need to be updated? They select yes or no. And if they select no, it's good. If yes, then they go through kind of that process that you gave them initially and update that stuff. But section one eighty-three does state all of that. It says that they have to update their information if it's needed, and they'll sign, you know, a document saying all those changes are correct to their, but, you know, the best of their knowledge. So that's why I think that needed to be changed over. If we're referencing the renewal process, that's in a separate section, not the initial application process. Lastly, on the whereas clauses, I do have a slight concern with some of the way it's, it's written. I don't know, I don't think the committee completely established that these were going to, the short-term rentals, impact the use of other property uses. I don't... I don't think, I don't know if we made that a factual find, a factual finding, yeah, that's right. And then if you look at the page two, the whereas clause there, it says, one of them, that the requirement of an annual permit that can be suspended or revoked in the event of repeated nuisance violations. I don't see any nuisance violations in the ordinance. In fact, the committee specifically talked about that and said that we need to strike those, and instead, any nuisance like noise or whatever, we were going to defer that to council to discuss if we need to change that language to be citywide instead of specific to short-term rentals. So, some of the language in there, I do have hesitancy on adopting without a bit. And I would just like to say that the top of the red line draft does say that, indicate that the redlining are those that were wording that was voted by the short-term rental committee, but nothing in the whereas clauses was voted or changed by the short-term rental committee. We specifically stayed away from that because we thought it was out of our charge as well, because it wasn't specific to the regulations. That's it.
Joe, you have a question?
Yep.
City attorney, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do think, you know, the committee did look at the whereases, and I tried to capture what the consensus was, and I'll just say, you know, at the end of the day, they adopted the ordinance, right, with all the changes. The other thing is nuisance, repeated nuisance violations, I think that applies, right? Because if you look at the operational standards, talks about you've got to comply with zoning and building codes, right, which is, makes sense, and then the city health and safety codes, those are, some of those are nuisance violations. So I think that's relevant, and I'd recommend keeping that in there.
Joe?
I don't want y'all to stick pins in the Joe doll, but I have, I want to talk about this occupancy of ten. What I think we are trying to do is ensure that if more than ten people are sleeping in that structure, they have to have a certain fire safety requirement. We're not saying that you can't have more than ten people congregate. You can't, we're not saying you can't gather, you can't have a barbecue, you can't, you can't have a reception, you can't have, you know, an after-the-wedding get-together, you know?
That is correct.
It's just, it's not congregation, it's not limiting some people's freedom to assemble, it's just if there are ten beds, ten heads on beds in that structure, hey, if there's eleven, you have to have sprinklers. Is that what we're trying to accomplish?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Well, is that clear in the, I'm sorry, you guys were there, is that clear?
That's not the, that's not the way it's written, no.
No.
Should it be written in that manner?
And it's possible. I think somebody sent us an email that said something to the effect that, what if we just referenced that you have to comply with whatever those building codes are, you have to comply with this, these building codes in that section? And that way, if they have more than ten, they know that they have to put the sprinkler systems and all of that in, but they're still allowed to do it if they want to go beyond that.
I think the owners are going to limit the number of people out of place, but just this arbitrary ten, I think you're right, if we could just phrase it in such a way, they must comply with fire code, or they must comply with the International Building Code fire codes, or whatever. And if that code says ten, they have to comply with it. But that doesn't mean they can't have more than ten people walking around on that property.
Right.
I think part of the idea, and I'm not disagreeing with you, no, I don't disagree with you. I think part of the intent was to limit the amount of having to go from code to code to interpret, but that doesn't mean I don't agree with you. That just means I think there might be some attempt to, to make it very clear and very...
I agree. And, and may I add, we were trying to also match the zoning code, because zoning code does specifically say ten people as well.
This isn't a zoning issue.
Yeah, it's not a zoning issue, but that...
I was elected to this chair six months ago yesterday, and every day we've talked about STRs, and I'm about ready to... Let me say this, if we can adopt, I want to ask the council, if we can adopt this ordinance on the first reading with proviso, then we want some changes done on the occupancy thing and the whereases and possibly the chapter in which it's in the codes, would that be acceptable to me?
I would be acceptable to do that.
I'm not trying to make life difficult, I'm just saying, some of these points are valid.
And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that. I think that for a starter, we're in good shape.
Oh, yeah.
And, and maybe this is something that, and, you know, we say, hey, maybe we revisit this in a year, or we, you know, so many months, or something of that nature, to see if anything's come down from the legislature, or that we possibly, we feel at that point in time would be, would warrant changing, so.
I'm sorry, I want to say...
Just a suggestion.
I want to say thank you to the people who've served on this committee. We gave you an impossible task and a short deadline, and you delivered a document on time and on budget.
On budget.
But if this is a first reading, we have a chance to change it.
We have a second reading, that's it, that is correct.
I would say to the effect that we were talking about, the current zoning code does state that it has to be ten. When you look at page three of the ordinance, it defines the short-term rental unit. We actually changed the definition of a short-term unit, so that they're actually not consistent, because we were anticipating that whatever the definition of a short-term unit in this ordinance would be, we would have to go back and change our current zoning, our code of ordinances to be consistent. So, I would say that to the effect that our current code of ordinances does say ten, well, also our code of ordinances said that a short-term rental unit is located in a residential zoning district, which we struck that, because some aren't. And so I think we need to, if we want to change that definition, we should make sure all those changes are done now, which is why I agree with Councilmember Herring's thought that we should adopt this with some conditions to come back to us at next reading. Because when we adopt this on second reading, we're going to probably make some changes to our zoning code, because they're currently not consistent. So, to make sure all those changes get through in one, at one time.
If we do that, we have to be very clear and give direction to staff.
Yes, they've got to know exactly what it is.
So, can we, I think what we're talking about in council is three things. Oh, Councilmember Herring said the chapter that it's in, the ten occupancy limit, and the whereas clauses.
If we change, if we make it its own chapter, nothing else changes.
No.
So, I mean, it really, it's not a big deal, one way or the other. All right, council, what's your pleasure?
Were you going to say something, Mr. Hoppe? Oh, I thought I saw you almost say something, okay. Is staff at least...
Go ahead. I thought he was going to address it. So, I'm not clear on what you all, what the specifics are with respect to the occupancy limit. I will say this, I heard a reference to this. If you just reference the building codes, part of the problem in my world is if it comes to enforcement and prosecution in court, there's, it's hard, it's harder to do, right? Because you're telling permit, or applicants and permities, well, you should have known what was in the building codes, and they don't. And so that, they don't. I mean, we just heard that it's nine hundred some odd pages, and you've got to pay for it, or you've got to come into City Hall and look at those codes. And so, it is much better, and I'm not suggesting you all, you know, don't do this another way, but it's much better to put the number into the ordinance so that everyone's very clear on, you know, what the rules are. And that helps staff, that helps, you know, when they apply for things, and so, that's my thought.
I think it's a fair point, but I do think we do that throughout our code of ordinances, frequently saying you have to refer to this, or you have to refer to that. In fact, when you look at our building code, it says you have to refer to the International Building Code for our building code. So they already have to do that if you want to do anything with the building code. It's not like, it's easily accessible either way.
Aren't we just trying to say that if we want to adjust the occupancy, and it's more than ten people, we want to require it to be sprinkled? I mean, is there anything beyond that that we're trying to accomplish here? Because we could make it that simple.
It could be that simple.
Please, make it simple.
And then what happens when we update our building code next time with a new version? Have to go in and make all these other amendments to all of our other... Which we do take, which do, we do add amendments as we're adopting those building codes.
So if we did that, then what we would be doing is in two places, we would be leaving the ten with an add-on that says, over ten thing, a sprinkler system is required.
Whatever the building code says, I guess, right? You could copy that language, copy and paste. It's in multiple places, but it does say that basically any occupancy over ten...
Yeah, so instead of referring to the building code, just take the building code and copy and paste it into the ordinance.
And don't reference it as the building code.
Yeah.
Did you do that?
Mike?
You're looking like it's probably not...
I'll look at Mike, I mean, I'll defer to Mike.
We'll do it, I mean, I know that, you know, what y'all are trying to accomplish.
So we're clear on what we want to do there?
Okay.
Okay? All right. Okay, so we have one item.
Did you need clarification on the other ones? The other, there were three things that we're looking at, did you need clarification?
The chapter, the occupancy, and I missed the third one.
A whereas.
The whereases.
On the whereas clause, I would just suggest that perhaps anything that is subjective in nature be reviewed.
Mike, what do you think? Is that, is that clear enough? That's kind of wide open.
Pretty wide open. You know, I think this was raised during the committee meetings, you know, we're, and I heard it today in staff meetings, we're, Curval's kind of ahead of the curve in some respects with respect to this ordinance. Some cities, Fredericksburg, for instance, behind the curve. And so, we're not saying that there are party houses all over, but that's what we're trying to prevent, right? That's what y'all are trying to prevent, you've asked us to try to prevent that. And so I think the whereases do a good job of saying, hey, this, you know, we don't want to impact adjacent properties ergo, here's this operational standards that we're going to apply.
What if, what if we took out the word negatively impact in number two? And it just reads for short periods of time, may impact. I mean, is that, anybody weigh in on that?
I mean, I think, it's hard, because it is subjective, because anything that comes into a neighborhood impacts the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I mean, you could have a car coming through, and there's air pollution, or they're, you know, using the roads, and so now it warts down the road a little bit, and so it's kind of hard to see, you know, we're putting all these things that are, that they impact the residential character, and I don't want to get that subjective to it, and, go ahead, did you have something to add?
You know, I'm just thinking that the whereases are part of the language of the ordinance, I think we ought to leave it alone.
Just leave it alone.
Well, I would say that they're legal findings. I mean, they are findings, I think sometimes even when we go to court, we say, these are the findings that we use, but that's why I'm not comfortable, because we are saying we find these completely, you know, true and correct. And so, I like the way Councilmember Clarkson said it, anything that's subjective.
Yes, but I think that puts, that puts an awful lot on staff, that's not fair.
It really does.
We need to be more specific, so. So I say we either adopt it and leave it alone for now, and it's one of those things that we know that we will look at, or we give him very specific things. I don't want to leave it wide open like that.
I got you. I would say we look at it now, because after this ordinance is adopted, we don't go back and amend whereas clauses.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's get very specific then, and let's do it as quickly as we can.
Second...
Number one, what are you, anything there, if that's okay?
Number one's fine.
Number two?
Negatively impacted the residential character by reducing communication and accountability between permanent residents, thereby partially substituting permanent residents for short-term visitors. That part, the last part made it through, but I don't know if it reduces the communication between permanent residences. We just had a perfect example of a couple of residences that were...
We also have the word "may" in there.
Yep.
Mike, if we, if we struck number two altogether, does it impact anything negatively that we might regret later? All right, strike two. Number three? Anyone? Going once, going twice? Number four?
That may have been addressed in the zoning, I don't know. I mean, when we, when we limited the SCR's...
I had down that it is a zoning. Okay, everybody okay with number four?
It contributes to the shortage.
I think we can strike it.
Strike it?
Strike it? Number four's gone. Number five?
We had a town hall meeting?
It wasn't just a dream.
That's good.
Are we good?
Good.
Number six? Going once? Going twice? All right, so we strike two and four. Is that specific enough? Everybody okay? Okay, so there's number two, Mike, okay? All right, do we have a third thing that we, that is necessary?
Chapter, whereas, and the occupancy, I think we're good.
Okay.
So, is council in agreement, we'll move to adopt this on first reading, and staff is clear on what, I guess, our expectations and...
Okay, good.
All right, so then, mayor, are we ready?
We don't mean to be too clear, I'm sorry if we're too clear.
All right, if we are ready, do I have a motion?
Yes, I will move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-thirty on first reading, and set a time for future review by December twenty-three.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Reading what the recommended action is, is to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-thirty on first reading, and set a time for future review by December twenty-three.
Ah, I got you, I was, I was on the wrong wavelength. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Yay! In favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, yay! Thank you, thank you, thank you to all the committee, you guys have done a yeoman's job. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, we are going to take a ten-minute break at eight-twenty-six. And we are ready for eight B, shall we?
Ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-thirty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one-oh-two, traffic and vehicles, section one-oh-two-dash-one, definitions of the code of ordinances of the city of Curval, Texas, by revising the definitions of excessive or unusual noise and noise-making in their entirety, containing a savings and severability clause providing effective date, order and publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, thank you very much. William?
Good evening. So this is kind of a housekeeping issue. Currently, based on the definitions we have on for excessive and unreasonable noise, we're, the police office, or the police department is unable to enforce what is a violation of our code, which is operating a car that either has an instrument on it that is excessive, or you omit something where the car then becomes excessive. We're okay on the car itself, but the portion of the definition that deals with putting an instrument on the car that is excessive and unreasonable is too vague, and so we need to change that. And we've amended it just to basically include language that's already been approved by the court. So we've taken a little bit of Bedford's ordinance, which has been approved by the court, we've taken a little bit of the Austin ordinance, which has been approved by the court, and we've basically just said that the car itself, if you remove something from the car, that is unreasonable if it causes excessive noise, which is unreasonable for a car of that type. Or we've also added a reasonableness clause, which is if somebody of reasonable sensibilities finds it unreasonable to their peace, then that is excessive and unreasonable. And then we've also added a presumption, which is it is presumed to be unreasonable and excessive if that sound carries vibration and you perceive, somebody else perceives the vibrations associated with that sound. So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to give the police department a little bit more ability to enforce our code as it currently exists.
Okay. Staff, any questions for William?
Or us?
Or council?
Or us?
What did I say, staff? I'm sorry. Council, excuse me.
I do not.
Nope.
Roman, anything? Anybody?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two, desk thirty-three, on first reading.
Do we have a second? A second from... A second from Brenda, and all in favor, right hand, and we are unanimous. All right, well, let's move on to nine A.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, second reading, and ordinance amending the city's fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget to account for the receipt of additional revenue, the disbursement of such revenue, and to make other amendments as provided. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
I do not have a presentation tonight, and we've already talked about this, so I'll, I'll give you a little bit of time back. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any pertaining to the amendment presented to you last meeting.
You're making this too easy.
Trying.
Counsel, any questions for her?
No.
All right, do we have a se, a motion?
I'm, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one on second reading.
Second.
Second from Joe, all in favor, right hand, and it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are ready for ten B.
Resolution number sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution adopting the city of Curville water and wastewater master plan update, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
Hello, I'm here to ask y'all to adopt the city of Curville water wastewater master plan. Now, we have, we've had a presentation with y'all earlier this, um, in July of this year. Um, some of the milestones.
It's not the right one.
It's not the right.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Barton, you have to, you, this isn't the right one. You're ready, nope, it's the next one, I'm sorry, we've already done that, I, I was ten A, should be ten B.
There you go.
Okay, so, we're here to adopt the water and wastewater master plan, give you a brief history on it, um, of what we've done over the past, what is that, fifteen years or so, we've been working on these different plans. It's a roadmap for the city of Curville, how we get to grow our infrastructure, our water and wastewater system, and actually build capacity for development within our community and fix aging infrastructure. Um, the last bullet point there is, um, when we had our update with y'all, it was earlier in July of this year. Um, with that, we're going to move it through it pretty fast, um, but this Ethan with, uh, Ethan Shires with Freezing Nichols is here to present his work, and then Freezing Nichols is the, is the consulting firm that has done this for us, so, with that, Ethan?
Appreciate it. Jump to the next slide there, so yeah, we, we presented on this already a couple of months ago, so we try to go pretty quick, respect y'all's time, I do appreciate the opportunity here, so, just a quick high-level process, so we've been working on this, um, close to about two years now with the city, real closely with staff, um, kind of pulling together information. So this is just a high-level overview of what our process is, but the way I like to explain it is pull data in, do a lot of data crunching, and then provide recommendations for, uh, improvements to the water and wastewater, uh, uh, distribution and, and collection systems, so. Kind of important, you know, thing to note here is you obviously have the Curville twenty fifty comprehensive plan, y'all have input a lot of work into that, um, so we want to make sure we utilize that data, have our kind of projections up there, um, just incorporating that information. What's worth noting is, you know, y'all are not growing at some of the historical rates that some of these, you know, cities in, here in central Texas are, growing at kind of a steady pace over the last ten, twenty years, um, but you have a lot of future, future potential for growth. Um, the, all of the, the kind of purple or pink and blue areas could more than double the, the current customer count if, if the city grew as it did. So, we're trying to account for that over that time period, um, we want to have a plan in place to account for that development as we get there. Uh, so there's our projections, kind of, you know, some historical information there at the beginning, and what we're projecting your water and wastewater demands and flows to be, um, out through the future. Not going to hit on that there, but there is information there, just, so we have it. There's the analysis that we've performed, looking at a couple of different things as outlined by TCQ and various requirements, um, just of assessing the capacity of your system. So, um, the thing to note here is that overwhelmingly, your system's in great shape, your staff has done a good job historically maintaining your system, and providing a, a high level of service to your customers. Did some kind of analysis, and, and we did a risk-based assessment, so here's just kind of some summary there, we went out and did some field inspections on some various facilities, um, and did, uh, that was water, this is wastewater, so took some pictures and evaluated the conditions, just, you know, wanted to make sure that it's not just a desktop analysis, right? We're going out in the field, we're gathering as much information as we can to perform this assessment. Um, and so, ultimately, uh, you know, kind of leads to this recommendation, so we've pulled together a list of priority projects, we've effectively developed, I think it's six, CIPs, kind of individual lists, so it's a whole lot of various plans and components, and broken down as much as we can to provide staff with this plan to accommodate development and address existing system issues, and all of these, you know, things that they do, need to do to maintain this high-level service that y'all have had, um, for your water and wastewater system. So, um, kind of flip through them real quick and just kind of outline them here, and let me change my slides here, so I got the numbers right. Uh, but this is the water distribution system, so we're recommending upwards of about eighteen million over the next twenty-five-year period, so roughly a million a year or so, um, just for your water distribution system, to make sure that we have, you know, good water age, um, good pressures in our system and that kind of thing. Um, we've also identified some O and M type improvements for your water system, so that's just to, as facilities age, we need to continue to invest infrastructure, um, to kind of bring the average, uh, condition of those facilities, you know, back up and, and keep up with it. So, we have some budget kind of associated with that. And then the next kind of, you know, big roadmap piece of it is, you know, how is this development going to go? We can't predict the future, so we want to try to empower staff as much as we can with that plan. Um, so we've identified, you know, a ton of different projects, kind of depending on how this development goes. The thing worth noting here, I mean, you can kind of see those numbers, it's eighty million, that's a lot, the, uh, intended purpose of this is, you don't, you're not going to have to do all eighty million of that next year. It's, this is what's required to service development, depending on where that development comes online, so the developer is going to have to bear a lot of that cost. We want to provide the city with a plan in order to do so, so when they're in those conversations with the developers, they can look at this plan and say, hey, oh, you know, we need a new tank over here, because we know that, you know, we need new pressures to, to maintain those pressures and things like that, so. Just providing that kind of roadmap, so that's your water system, next up is your wastewater system, um, same kind of thing here, so this is addressing existing system issues, continuing to provide a high-level service to your customers, a little bit higher on the wastewater side, but yeah, over the twenty-five-year period, we're looking at, you know, one or two million a year. Um, same thing here, you know, O and M, we just need to continue to invest in our infrastructure, and the next step is this development plan, so we have one for the wastewater as well. So, let me get that number there, so a little bit less, but, you know, seventy or so, um, depending on kind of how that growth comes in. And then, we didn't evaluate this piece, we just, you know, kind of, part of our component is we, some of the previous studies, um, that y'all have invested in, have identified improvements to your treatment facilities, we still need to continue to maintain those facilities and, and expand as needed, those are your most critical pieces of infrastructure, so we have those projects listed there. And then all of that gets wrapped up into our total CIP, and you can kind of see it broken down and summarized there, so, again, just trying to break this down and summarize it as much as we can, um, providing staff with that ability and flexibility to, you know, plan and maintain your systems moving forward, so. Just real quick, I'm trying to go fast, I know it's been a long night, but do y'all have any questions on that?
Anything, anybody?
Just a, just a re- reiteration, a restatement, sometimes we are, um, criticized for not looking at improvements and doing what this plan says, so, to repeat what you said, a lot of these costs are borne by developers, and these costs are dependent on where development happens.
Absolutely.
This plan does not anticipate all of these things have to happen in the next twenty-five years for Curville to be sustainable in their water system. So, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
No, you're absolutely right, I, I can't predict the future, right, and I don't think anybody can, but our kind of goal and task with this plan is, is to provide that roadmap. And as, as things change, you know, you, your staff, uh, you know, highly qualified, has the ability to say, okay, yeah, we need this project, and we need it sooner than we thought we did, and kind of, you know, adjust accordingly.
I mean, you, I would be, it would, it wouldn't be a mistake to say, if you say the grand total that you said was a hundred and eighteen million dollars, and you also said the words over twenty-five-year period of time, it would not be correct for me to take a hundred and eighteen million dollars and divide it by twenty-five, and say we need to put that into our annual budget.
So it's a rough estimate, yeah.
But I mean, would, that's, that is not how I perceive this to be, right? A hundred and eighteen million because of the other items that we mentioned, so if someone were, so if a citizen were to come to us and say, a hundred and eighteen million dollars divided by twenty-five is this, and you need to be plugging this much into your budget, that really isn't what, that really isn't the way we need to consider this document.
That is correct, and so this has a lot of developer costs associated with it too, so there, it's been broken into two main components, one is our infrastructure, what we need to kind of keep our system running, keep it up to date, keep it up to speed, and it's also included a whole lot of developer, um, potential new developments, and what those developers would have to do to make, to bring, uh, their development onto our city, those costs are reflected in here, so that's something that we're not even scheduling to, to, to put in our budget.
But that doesn't mean that we're not maintaining our system.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's right.
So.
It really just helps us hold the development community accountable, um, when they.
And there are pieces that we need to be responsible for, but, but we should not oversimplify this document and say that we need to take this time, final biggest number, divide it by twenty-five, and put that into our budget, or we're not maintaining our water system, that is not correct.
It's very scenario-specific, depending on locations.
Okay.
Uh, we've got a number of, uh, we have a lot of topographical challenges, as you can imagine in the hill country, and so a lot of those improvements are going to be depending on where growth occurs, uh, and certain areas of the system that are, uh, more aged than others.
Sure. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, anyone else, Brenda?
No.
Joe?
No, thank you.
Roman, you're good? All right. Are we ready for a motion? Somebody say yes?
Yes. Just, just real quick, before you make the motion, we do have some next steps before you, so this, this will, we've actually already started, uh, a couple of analyses, if you go back just one slide. Um, uh, we are doing an impact fee analysis, and that's, uh, again, to make sure that we are forwarding on, growth's paying for growth, right? Uh, and so we're looking at that, at least to know what those numbers look like, as well as a wholesale analysis for our wholesale customers, uh, and then other, uh, CIP implementation steps, uh, including, uh, current rate structure, uh, and debt analysis within our revenue utility system. So, uh, more to come to council, but this is the first step, uh, we plan our work, and then we work our plan.
Okay. All right, who is going to make a motion?
I move we adopt resolution number sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-two.
So, second from Kim. All in favor, right hand please, and it is unanimous, thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, down. Ethan, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
All right, ten C, this is an exciting one.
Qualification of five responders as design build firms for the public safety facility project, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, I'm glad to hear you say it's exciting, because we're, we're glad to be at this point. Uh, it's long overdue, uh, we've been working through this for, for several months, uh, it's really started, uh, you know, back in the comp plan. Uh, so I want to highlight that guiding principle, the public safety aspect of it. Uh, in, in, in May of twenty twenty-two, the bond was approved by the citizens of Curville for forty, forty-five million dollars. Um, in, in June, in July, we went through the whole DB process to, uh, council authorization, and then we hired Freezing Nichols as the owner's rep. Uh, with that said, I have Joel Kokamore here, who's been helping myself and, uh, our, our legal office, as well as the others, work through this process on heritage and public safety facility. Uh, in September, we issued the RFQ for this one, uh, we had eight responses, and, and so, uh, the, the committee did the evaluation, and said before you tonight, if you'll recall, what was mentioned on the Heritage Center, making at, at a maximum of five per state law, can be shortlisted to move forward to the proposal phase. Uh, so that's what we're here for, for you tonight, is to, uh, reiterate the, the, you know, the process that we've gone through. Again, here's a, a quick synopsis of what the design build is, we're just hiring one team to, to do everything, uh, from the design and, and the construction standpoint. Again, per twenty-two sixty-nine rules, five are, are allowed, uh, to move forward, that is council discretion as, as well. If, if you see some of the names up here, that is, you know, entirely up to you to, to strike, uh, some of these. Uh, what we evaluated on was, uh, really the, the profile of the teams, and how qualified were they from a design standpoint, from a construction standpoint, uh, the, the local entities versus, versus non, uh, we, we didn't really have anybody out of state, uh, offices, some of them might have been in the outer reaches, uh, but really, we're looking to see what's going to be the best of that forty-five million dollars for the city of Curville and, and our, our, you know, important, uh, public safety departments, and, and getting them that, that building and meeting our deadline. Uh, so again, we received eight, uh, the committee's, uh, recommendation are, are these five contractors, I know particular order, I just have it alphabetical, there's, there's no ranking, this is purely a selection, uh, ranking actually happens in the next phase with the proposal process with, when costs are associated with it. And so, I, I'll, I'll leave this up here, uh, once I continue to, or come back on, on the actions. So here's the next steps, uh, again, tonight, we're going to shortlist, uh, the teams. We will issue the, uh, RFP to the shortlisted teams, uh, here within a week or two, Joel and I will, uh, fine-tune what, what's needed to make sure that we have, uh, everything, and then, December, January, with, with the holidays, Joel and I were actually talking about that's even the best time we want to look at opening, is, uh, late January, early February, I, I've got a little contingency kind of built in this for you, uh, so that we can also get, you know, proposals, get a proper evaluation, get good, uh, concurrence across the board from the, the, the selection committee, uh, bring this to you as a design build contract, uh, to authorize the city manager to negotiate the, the finals based off of the rankings. And then, so when, once we do that, that's, the contract gets executed, we're still shooting for the fall twenty twenty-four, uh, construction timeline to be complete.
Okay.
With that said, uh, that's all I have, again, I can go back to, to the, the recommended shortlist if, if preferred, uh, but that's all I really have for you.
Do you have anything, just, uh, anything to share with us with each of these in any way?
Uh, I will say there are, are not any Curville local, uh, contractors or design.
Say again?
There, there are not any contractors, construction contractors or design firms as, uh, from Curville. Um, you know, local in this regard, because of the scope of the project was much more expansive, so we, we considered, uh, basically the, the eastern limits of San Antonio, about seventy mile, seventy-five mile diameter, or, or sorry, radius, uh, from Curville as our local constituents, uh, and that got a, a good interest from, from some of these. Uh, Joel has, has done a number of projects, both, uh, on, on the construction side and the consultant side, and has some, uh, experience with, working with these as well, um, and, and so, really, the, the qualifications is, you know, cream of the crop for, for Curville, and we were very, very pleased to see this, but at the same time, it made it extremely hard to sit in that room and only pick five, uh, so.
So when you say that we didn't have any from Curville, is it because we didn't receive any SOQs from them from Curville, or the top five that were selected aren't from Curville?
We didn't have any, any SOQ submitted, uh, there, there are some constituents that are, uh, I, I think there's some that are on the teams for, like, surveying, or some smaller, but
Right.
The two main, the architects and the construction contractors, uh, are, are San Antonio or, or beyond.
On the, the number one there that you have selected, I, not that it's listed in that order for any reason, but the one that's on top, I don't see listed on the, one of the eight, um.
So.
It's number seven.
Yeah, it's, it's number seven, it's Thomas Byrne, uh, it, it, that, they're talking about on the, on the attachment.
Yeah, it, it's a different name, can you clarify that?
I, I was, I was looking, the legal documents that I, I received actually have the Byrne Construction Services. For some reason, they're submittal, uh, because we do the online, they identified it as the, the Thomas Byrne, and I, I did the same thing, so.
Okay.
Because it was, it was rather interesting.
Thank you.
Okay, does, uh, Joel have anything he wants to share with us, he's driven all this way?
Mayor, council, uh, appreciate the opportunity, no, I just, I just want to reiterate, um, uh, what, what Kyle said is that the, the eight SOQs that were, were received, um, represent the best construction firms in, in this part of the state, so I think, um, the selection process was very difficult, but I think the selection committee, um, uh, did a great job in evaluating the SOQs, and I think what we've presented here tonight represents, um, the, the, the best five SOQs that we received for this project.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, any other comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve recommended design build teams to solicit proposals.
And a second from Joe? All right, and all in favor, right hand please? And it is unanimous, yes, all right. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we are narrowing down. Okay, we are ready for ten D's, shall we?
Fourth Memorial Libraries Participation and Band Books Week, the library's policies, the library's association with the American Library Association, and personnel conduct regarding these matters, Barbara Dull Ferguson, citizen, council member Garcia, sponsor.
All right, do we have Ms. Ferguson here? Would you take the?
I want to make a presentation.
You may come to the.
I appreciate that.
Mayor, may I give like a brief introduction just as to the sponsorship, it's like two sentences?
Well, let's let her go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. My name is Barbara Dool Ferguson. I'm from here in Kerrville. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving me this time and I want to especially to thank you, Councilman Roman Garcia, who sponsored me and is making it possible for this issue to come before you again tonight. I bring with me tonight over 1,100 signatures that were collected over the last six days. And I have copies of them that I'll leave with the city secretary. But those signatures in a very short period of time were collected from Kerr County residents who are calling for change in our library's policies. These were signed in just six days and we are continuing to collect them. Many have made the comment to me, they can't have obscene books in the children's department. Even Councilman Herring was quoted in the Daily Times saying, "There are guardrails in place to prevent those Kirk controversial books from getting into the hands of children." Wrong. Those books can get in the hands of children and they do. The book read from in the last meeting is available to 12-year-olds in our library. It's on the shelves. It's in the card catalog. The law enforcement officers, county commissioners, and many citizens I have spoken to just shake their heads and drop their eyes in shame when excerpts are read or described. The mayor herself tonight used the terms abusive, rude, and inappropriate, and they are, you're right. The reading of the passage from me, Earl, and the dying girl at the last meeting was too inform. It had been made clear that some on the council had not read any of the books, had not looked at them, and didn't intend to. The citizen reader prefaced her reading by asking those under 18 present or listening online to leave. All city council meetings are posted on YouTube for community viewing. Because of the content that was read, the video of that city council meeting had a disclaimer allowing viewing only by those over the age of 17. Amazing. The city recognized the book was not appropriate for those under 18 on YouTube, yet continues to shelve it where children can look at it and check it out. But there is some protection under the law. These books are legal. There's no, there's no controversy there, but there's protection under the law. These books meet the definition of obscene. Displaying and promoting them without regard for who will be offended or alarmed is against the law. This law, 43.22, exists so that our communities can set standards of decency to avoid intentional offense and to protect the innocent, just like you can't go through the checkout and see a copy of Playboy or Hustler. They're legal, but you're not allowed to promote them or display them where they will offend others. That's exactly what the book display did. It was set out in front of the children's department with books that had obscene material in them that under the law qualifies as that and parents were offended and alarmed that they were there, present for children to see. Now, there are 1,140 signatures from people who care about our library, who love our library. And the whole reason they're signing these petitions is because they care what happens in our library. It's not that they don't like the library, it's because they care about the library. Now, both the city police and sheriff's department referred inquiries from parents and complaints to the county attorney and the district attorney's offices citing the Texas Penal Code 43.22. The DA replied that it was an applicable law to the case and the law was probably broken, but that the county attorney has jurisdiction, not the DA. Okay? The county attorney, and as an aside, one of the statements that was made was, "I don't want to touch that with a 10-foot pole." Well, nobody does. This is ugly. The county attorney has still not made her opinion public, even though according to the police, it was referred to her sometime before October 29th. Now, I bring up this, the legal aspect, because this is not unique in Kerrville. The Missouri Attorney General just recently has made a statement about his making changes to Missouri law that would allow in, for prosecutions of this type of thing. They're not going to let this stand. Ken Paxton has weighed in on the Lano case where there, and if you're not familiar with that, I would suggest that you get familiar with that also. That is the lawsuit against the city librarian. Okay? Then Ken Paxton also has made a statement that when county attorneys and DAs will not prosecute for these types of offenses where they're not protecting children in the community, he wants the legislature to make changes so that he can step in and prosecute those cases. That's exactly what we're looking at. This has come to our doorstep probably earlier than any of us thought it would. However, all of this did serve a purpose in bringing awareness to the breadth and depth of obscenity in our children's, in our library's children and young adult collections. My objection, and that of many I've spoken to, is the sexualization of children. It is not our library's place to introduce our children to graphic descriptions of child rape, incest, and indiscriminate sex through novels that are depicting explicit sexual activity, instruction, suggested sex toys, and methods. Furthermore, the argument, it's the parent's responsibility to supervise their children, is just frankly ridiculous. We have laws requiring restaurants, bars, and stores to card underage youth, to assist parents in ensuring their child cannot get their hands on things that can be harmful to them. We do not allow a 12-year-old to drive, buy a gun, or cigarettes. Is it too much to ask that our library keep obscene material in an adults-only area? We don't want to remove anything, we want to move it, that's all. No law stipulates what a library must carry in its collections or how they must classify books. Example, do you classify it as an adult book, a child's book, a young adult's book? All libraries choose certain books and exclude others. That's not banning any book, it's just a simple fact that no library can have every book that has ever been published. We have a choice in what goes into our library and we have policies that set how those choices are to be made. And we also rely on the judgment of staff in our library board to do that. But ultimately, ultimately, the policies of our library lie here. I question why our library chose to display and promote in view of children the most offensive adult, children, and young adult books that they have in their collections. Those were the ones displayed. The city council has promoted kindness in our community. And I must say, it was not kind of the library to recklessly display these books without regard for how the citizens might consider them. It was not kind for the city manager to give the librarian the Staff of the Week feature on the city's webpage immediately after the meeting where citizens expressed outrage at the actions of the library. It is not kind of the council to ignore the public who elected them and perpetuate this offense through their inaction and misinformation. I call on the Kerrville City Police and County Attorney to enforce Texas Penal Code 4322.
Your time is up.
Do you spend 10 minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lila Goldberg?
Pardon?
Lila Goldberg?
We're calling the next speaker.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you.
I will let you know, we have 26 or so speakers, so if you can keep it under four minutes, that's great. If someone else happens to say everything that you were going to say and you want to give up your time, that's also great, so, but you will have four minutes.
Lila Goldberg? Martha Mitchell?
Uh, well, well, the four-minute people will have you out here if you don't mind.
I have several points I'd like to make regarding the banned books issue. The library has a detailed policy in place to handle complaints about books in the library. This policy includes a form which can be filled out and submitted to the library where it can move forward ultimately to the library advisory board for review. Since this issue became an issue, not one of these forms has been submitted to the library. If this group is not interested in even testing the policy that's already in place, why should any suggestion of revising that policy even be considered? The state of Texas requires the library to follow the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read documents, which can be found on the same website as that form. These documents require the library, quote, "to make available the widest diversity of views and expressions, including those that are unorthodox, unpopular, or considered dangerous by the majority," unquote. In Kerrville, I don't believe it's the majority finds the books in question dangerous, just a very vocal minority. Three, regarding the idea of these books being pornography, I refer you to multiple dictionary definitions which all include some version of, quote, "intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings," unquote. As to the legal definition, I refer you to the 1973 Supreme Court ruling known as the Miller Test outlined by then Chief Justice Warren Burger. The first guideline of that ruling asked, quote, "whether the average person applying contemporary community standards would find the work taken as a whole appeals to the prurient interest," unquote. The notion of community standards is very vague and would be difficult if not impossible to quantify, but none of the books I read from the table in the library or from other lists of challenged books in Texas could possibly be taken as a whole to appeal to the prurient interest by any rational person. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Susanna Jimson?
Good evening, my name is Susanna Jimson and I live at 1073 Pinnacle View in Kerrville. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. I'm here to strongly support the library staff and I wish to thank them for the tremendous service they provide to our community day in and day out. Without their efforts, Kerrville residents would not have free access to a first-class library, something that not every city in Texas can enjoy. If we believe what we're being told, some people only want to make sure that the books in question are out of the reach of children. Well, they are. All children under the age of 18 must have a parent's permission to obtain a library card. All the books in question are in the adult section of the library. And all the adult books are in the upper floor of the library, a long way from the children's section on the main level. So the issue of children having access to these books is really a non-issue. In summary, everyone has the right to determine what they and their family reads. As a first-class library, we have a wide selection of books covering a broad range of topics. As a tax-paying citizen, I want the right to have access to any of those books for myself and my family. Librarians place adult books in the adult section. However, librarians are not babysitters and it is the responsibility of every parent to stay engaged with their children and monitor and approve what they read. Thank you, and especially thanks again to our library staff for all they do for our community.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Jennifer Dashiel?
I have to say, I'm real disappointed to still be talking about this particular issue. The library already has a process that citizens concerned about particular books have access to and have thus far not used. From what I can tell, most of the citizens haven't actually read the books they're complaining about. The library is incredibly fair and balanced in books that they collect. I've read over the collection development policy and spoken with the library staff about it. They ensure that their personal beliefs are not a factor in purchasing books. The library is staffed by thoughtful, well-educated, caring people who are just trying to do their jobs. We do a disservice to them when we continue to discuss some of the things being said about them as though they're rational. The beleaguered staff have handled this situation with an extraordinary amount of grace and the city should be standing up for them with far more conviction. This should never have been able to come back on the agenda again. Secondly, it's not the job of the city or the library to decide what is appropriate reading material for my children or anyone else's. Parents are responsible for that. We don't obviously have the same opinion on what an obscene material is, so I don't know how we would make a decision on which books need to be moved collectively. Censorship and book banning is never looked back on fondly by history. There is no liberty or freedom of expression or speech in censorship. It is a reflection of fear. They aren't worried about protecting our community from sexual content in general or we'd be hearing more complaints about Game of Thrones, Outlander, Handmaid's Tale, Girl with a Dragon Tattoo, Fifty Shades of Grey. For that matter, the Bible has many examples of inappropriate content. In Julie of the Wolves, a book for eight to 12-year-olds that is on every homeschool list I've ever seen and ranging from different types of families. A girl is forced to marry a man when she's a young teenager and then he rapes her in the book, and this is commonly read by most children. Many of the books I've heard complaints about relate to homophobia. I've read Gender Queer in its entirety, one of the books that's come up many times, and I could debate the specific complaints people have about it, but I won't. I won't defend it because that makes the argument seem justifiable and we shouldn't be willing to debate about homophobia. This is a line in the sand that we should not cross. We know what books can do for people. According to Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, an education researcher and professor of education at Ohio State University, "Books can be mirrors that allow readers to see themselves in the pages. They can also be doors that open vistas into other worlds and perspectives. Reading a book about someone like yourself can make you feel validated and seen. It can make a person feel less alone in a world that can be cruel and isolating. Reading books about those who are different than ourselves and have different experiences than we do can help us to understand what it might be like for others and help us to develop empathy. Seven percent of people identify as LGBTQ plus and that number is likely underreported given how many people live in fear of coming out. There are LGBTQ plus children and adults in Kerrville as well as their families and friends who love them. There's nothing dangerous or alarming about their lives. They, like everyone else, deserve to be able to find literature reflecting their lives. This is a free country and people have a right to loudly say the hateful things that are being said, but we don't have to keep providing them a platform and we certainly do not need to take action. It is my sincere hope that the LGBTQ people in our community will be able to watch this meeting and recognize that you..." meeting and recognize that you, as their city council, will not tolerate homophobia. I hope that our community will be able to look back on this period in our history knowing that we stood up for our library staff and shut down hate, knowing that every member of this community still has the freedom to read whatever they believe is appropriate." Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Summer?
Most of what I had to say has been said. I'd like to reiterate that I am here to say I am proud of our beautiful library and the well-educated and dedicated librarians and director. Any community would be happy to have them. I believe it is appropriate to have a banned book week display in the library. The library is for all citizens, including adults, and I believe parental rights are not being interfered with. Parents are able to guide their children in their reading material. I think that freedom of speech can cause some inconveniences to people. That's just the way it is, but freedom of speech is worth defending. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Stefan Gross?
I'm reading the statement by Dr. Stephanie Gross. "I'm here to support our librarians and free access to all kinds of literature in our library. I've written, published, and taught American literature, culture, and rhetoric since nineteen-eighty-nine. In my thirty years, thirty-two years of teaching, my students have often come to me looking for books to validate their experiences. They cherish their time with books that help them to understand others' points of view. It turns out that our young people are looking for empathy and understanding. They're actually curious about diversity and value it immensely. They appreciate books which represent them, especially those representations that are rare in media culture. It turns out that young people who read become mature adults capable of holding one more idea, more than one idea at a time, able to handle complexity and eager to share experiences with others different from themselves while managing to hold on to their own values. It has always been literature's work to confront change, to represent voices that are drowned out by self-righteous mobs, and to challenge beliefs that are cruel, petty, hateful, and often dangerous. Every single generation, going back to Socrates, had issues that writers, philosophers, and poets had to confront in order to speak their truth, and every single generation has seen authors persecuted and maligned. Attacking books and those who provide them or write them is not a new issue and is the reason we actually have banned book weeks in this country. We already know what it means when voices are silenced, when a vocally vicious group of small-minded people decide to shut up the people they don't agree with. It is un-American at its core because it is a twisting of the ideal of free speech laid out in our Bill of Rights. Whenever a group says my values and my voices matter, but others don't, it is un-American. We see it play out through history, an old, broken record. I'm right, you are wrong. My experiences matter, but yours are evil, sinful, unacceptable. Reading about different belief systems and ways of life are not going to scare your kids away from their values or faith, though it may challenge them and enrich them. It's not likely to convert them, just as representing a gender identity in a story does not cause your child to become gay or trans. I suggest that ignorance, hate, and fear of the other is far more dangerous to your faith, your kids, and the country than any book could ever be. And the idea that any group of people would attack librarians is abhorrent and despicable. Librarians are highly trained professionals. They deserve our gratitude, providing us with a safe place to read a variety of literature, history, and documents. They provide services for those who need them, such as computer access and printers. They provide countless enrichment programs for children, and they shell books according to appropriate age and content. They are in service to a key democratic ideal." I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sylvia Ostos?
I live at three-nine-eight Inglewood Drive here in Kerrville. I've been married for fifty-eight years, have three children and seven grandchildren. I'm a former English teacher. We lived in Corpus Christi for thirty-four years where I was an officer in several, several organizations and served on many committees for CCISD, one of which was the Advisory Committee on Sex Education Curriculum. I'm a graduate of Leadership Texas. I was the president of Texas PTA and served on National PTA Board of Directors. I presented at local, state, and national workshops on parental involvement. One evening before I got all those credentials, my third-grade son came to me and said, "Mother, is beeswax a dirty word?" Well, I didn't know, but I said, "I think that just means that it's none of your business." And he said, "Well, is F-U-C-K a dirty word?" Well, my heart stopped. Here, my third-grade child was asking me something that I wasn't prepared for him to know at that time. Well, I could have let it go, but I decided this is a teachable moment. So I sat him down on the couch. I had a little book that had an illustration of how a flower, a chicken, a dog, and a person had reproduction. And we sat and went through the book, and when it was through, I said, "If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them any time." And he smiled and went on to bed. Today's young children and teens are confronted with all sorts of terms that they see at school, on the social media, on TV, and they hear from a lot of adults. Sometimes those even confound people my age. I'm grateful that we have a library that has books parents, teens, and people my age can use to help understand these terms. How helpful that there are books for parents to use for teachable moments with their children. How comforting that teens can find books to help them understand the terms they hear. How reassuring when they can read books written by young people who have lived with some of the same questions. What empathy some must feel for themselves or friends who are facing a world all too ready to condemn those who are different. How wonderful that there are books we older people can find to help us navigate all these new terms that we've never heard before. I support our librarians who have had the foresight to place a wide range of books in our library. I support their banned book exhibit. It's important to be exposed to these books in order to understand whether we agree or disagree with those who wish to take them out. We should be proud that we have a library that broadens our world with information even when we don't agree with it. We should expect our library to have books that please the far right, the far left, and those in between. There are books I would never want to read, but that does not mean that those books should be removed from the library. Removing books because some people are offended by them is not the proper way to run a library. I'm proud of our library and those who work there. Let them do the job for which they are trained. Let's foster broader view of what books should be in the library that isn't covered by our politics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Leinhard?
I want to start by saying my experience is a little different than many of the speakers that have come before me. I don't have young children anymore, but I am proud to say that I raised two sons and one grandson. I'm really proud of that they've grown up to be smart, well-adjusted, tolerant, successful young men. We were always open to expressions of various ideas in our home and they were allowed to read anything of their choice, and they were never harmed by that. Now, my real reason for being here is to praise the library. I think the Buttholesworth Library is an extremely important asset to our community and the library staff is awesome. They are friendly, they are helpful, resourceful, they provide programs beneficial to all residents, young and those not so young. You can go there for tax help, book discussions, crafting opportunities, garden advice, gardening advice, my passion, movie chats, and so on. And staff are always open to suggestions for new programs and items of interest to the community. They are doing their jobs and they are doing these jobs wonderfully with no regard to gender, political party, religion, ethnicity, and any other labels that we tend to use. Everyone is welcome in the library as they should be. Any attempt to denigrate the library staff or possibly threaten their livelihoods for doing their jobs, which include providing information to all groups in our city and county, is wrong. And any attempt by a small segment of the community to block a library from presenting information to the entire community is wrong and contrary to our Constitution. I want to end by saying thank you to the librarians for their work and thank you for the city council for allowing me to address you on this issue.
Thank you.
Susan Wolf?
I'm here in support of our librarians. Much of what's already been said, I agree with. I don't want to reiterate it again. I think the speakers have done a fabulous job, but ours is a public library and I feel like this political stunt should not be allowed to represent the minority. And I'm here because I disagree with the people that want to ban the books, pull the books, disrespect the librarians. Just because a book doesn't meet your standards, it's not your library. It's a public library. It's for everybody. And I would never expect every book in the library to meet with my standards. And having other people attempt to make these choices for me and for my neighbors, for my children or my child and my neighbor's children, really upsets me. It doesn't fit in any way with the rights that I believe we have. I've always found our library staff to be helpful, courteous, respectful. They've always made the library a welcoming and inclusive place, and I hope that the community here supporting the library is heard loud and clear and that we continue to support our library because they're protecting our rights and protecting against censorship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Lewis?
I won't take long because I feel like all the speakers before me have done a way better job of saying what I would say. But I am a mother of two small children and to those that feel that they need to police what the library contains, thank you, but I can take care of what my children read and have discussions with them if they happen upon something that I feel is inappropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Powers?
I like her style. I have much the same approach and attitude, but there are a couple of things that I do want to bring up. We live in a society that has grown more and more child-centric, I feel, and I want to be clear that a library is not a child-centric place. A library is a reader and a knowledge-gatherer-centric place. It is for those who desire to read and have the widest variety of materials available. And I further agree that, yes, a parent is responsible to know what that child in your family is reading and be there to answer those questions and help guide where necessary. And there's one part that I haven't seen anybody mention yet. There is a, there's a nation, or it is nationwide and it's very well-known in Texas, movement that has a very large social media presence. It's been organized to force libraries to remove material deemed inappropriate, and that started at the school library level, but has moved on into public library level. And the organizer's message is being viewed, of course, on social media, and nobody is interfering with their social media presence because they have the freedom of speech. They have the right, just as I believe we all have the right to choose our message and to be able to have the freedom to read whatever we choose to read. It's an important and necessary right. And I've heard people say that this is the minority and that's the minority, excuse me, that is a minority, but the right is meant to apply to the least. So it doesn't matter who the minority is. Each has the right, and in this case, I reserve my right to go read in a public library, and I certainly hope that you will watch out for our library and our librarians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Carlson?
My first grader's falling asleep. This is way past your bedtime. I am here to support the library. I love librarians. We have an amazing library for the size of our town. It's got some amazing books where you can explore areas and meet people that you wouldn't necessarily meet in a small town like this. Sorry, I'm getting sick, so my voice is kind of scratchy. But some of the books that people have problems with, I don't. Like, I Am Jazz is one of my daughter's favorites. She likes reading about other people, and they don't have to be identical to her. They can be different, and we can talk about it. So I'm just here to support the library, and I have to get her to bed, so, good night.
Thank you.
Davis Rogers?
I like being in the minority tonight. I'll stand if I'm the last one here, but I know there's a few others. So my name's Dave Rogers. I know Joe and Brenda. Our boys played baseball together, I believe, and I know Stuart out front, but that's about it. I've only, this is my second time here. I've been here twenty-two years. I have pastored a church for the last twelve years, and I have a business. So I'm a businessman and a bit of pastor. But I'm here tonight representing what I believe is genuine pornography as defined, I'm going to read for you in a minute, from the federal government in their definition of pornography. But I have, I had some folks that went and read every one of those ten books, which I didn't want to do. I'll be real honest with you. I would read a little bit, and I said, "That's enough. I've seen enough." But they wanted, they read, and they pulled out from every one of those books quotes. They're in here, and their page numbers are in here. And when I asked if I could bring these tonight, I asked when I said I wanted to speak, and that, I said, "There's quotes from the books. Can I bring those?" And she said, "Yes." So I've got the authority here. She said, "Just don't put pictures," and the implication was- She said, "Just don't put pictures," and the implication was photographic pictures. There are a few graphical cartoons that are in here. But these are the 10 books that they were saying did not need to be banned. And I'm going to leave the sets for you guys right here. It says, I'm going to read you what it says here. It says, "Content warning. This folder contains pornographic copy and graphical excerpts from the 10 featured books available to children in our Buttholesworth Memorial Library. By opening this, you take responsibility for what you read and see at your own risk. Keep this folder out of the reach of children." When my daughter was copying this for y'all, I said, "Don't read it, sweetie, don't read it. Don't let the kids read it." That's how graphic it is. So, let me just read what I found related to what the federal government says about pornography, which this is. Those 10 books contain it. This is the federal government. We've been talking about the laws of the land. The United States Department of Justice website says this. "Child pornography is a form of sexual exploitation. Federal law defines child pornography as any visual depiction of sexually explicit conduct involving a minor, which are persons less than 18 years of age. Images of child pornography are also referred to as child sexual abuse images. The federal law prohibits the production, distribution, importation, reception, or possession of any image of child pornography." And it goes on, and I'm going to read you one more, which we're talking about obscenity. "Child pornography is a form of sexual expression that often involving the depiction of children engaging in sexually explicit conduct. It is not entitled to First Amendment protection." And there's more on that. I'm going to leave these with you over here, and you guys can read them. I'll put five of them over there.
Thank you.
Hello, librarians. My timing's not really good here. I'm Delane Siggraman, I reside at 4,000 Comanche Trace Drive. And I'm here to say much of the same that you've already heard tonight. I've had the pleasure of working with Danielle Brigotti on several projects, and she's shown nothing but the utmost of professionalism and care and compassion about making sure the project gets done. Our first point-in-time count was held at the library. We started there, we trained there, and then we went out from there into the field and counted. She was so helpful, in fact, some of the staff actually helped us that first year. Then Judy and I had the pleasure of working with her and her staff to have the food relief hotline at the library. And she was very helpful in helping us set up the phone system, guiding our volunteers that came there every day to the room with which they would call. And we did provide a service. We found many families during the pandemic in March of 2020 that did not have food because their caregivers couldn't get to them. They were all told to stay at home. So, it was a very rewarding experience with which I think we couldn't have done without the library and their staff. I stopped by the library today to get their mission statement because I think they live up to it, and I want to read it. "The Buttholesworth Memorial Library's mission is to inspire creativity, encourage lifelong learning, instill the joy of reading, and strengthen our community by providing access to information, education, culture, and recreation. Their guiding principles are: Be a warm and welcoming place for community members to gather; be actively engaged in the life of the community; strive to deliver the highest quality services possible; and pledge to be approachable and knowledgeable; be good stewards of the library's financial and material resources." This is the best one for me. "Protect the freedom to read and access information." So, I want to applaud the librarians for getting through this time period. I hope we don't have to have this on the agenda again. And I thank you so much for what you do for the library, and applaud the city staff, the city manager, and the council for listening but also supporting our librarian and their staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Debbie Oakes.
City Council members and Mayor Judy. I am Debbie Oakes at 714 Jackson Road in Kerrville. "Our heavenly Father, Jesus, and the Holy Spirit has created us and has given us guidelines to live by. Who better to do this than the one true God who made us? God says that a physical relationship should only be between a husband and his wife. When we go against what he says, it doesn't go well for us. Pornography is a multi-billion-dollar business and helps make human trafficking profitable. They are targeting younger and younger children. Sometimes it's getting them ready to become easier prey for pedophiles. So, we know there are people who don't want any part of pornographic books removed from society. We also know that pornography destroys people's lives. They are not able to have good lifelong relationships. Their hearts are broken over and over, and they hurt others. When I was young and naive, I met a boy. I believe that because of his involvement in pornography, it caused him to seduce me into a relationship that I was not seeking. I was unaware that a good physical relationship doesn't always mean a good friendship. We married, but for 20 years, it was not great. During the marriage, I was invited to a Bible study, and the people were sharing answers to their prayers. I was amazed. I was asked if I wanted to pray and ask Jesus to be my Lord and Savior and to forgive me of my sins. I had always believed God and Jesus, but never had prayed that prayer until that night. My whole life changed in a good way. I realized some of the things that I was doing in order to cope with my husband was wrong, and I removed them from my life and asked him to forgive me. But my first husband continued his involvement in pornography. It's an addiction we don't want to subject our children to. I suffered the consequences of his lack of attention until he left me and our two young daughters for another woman. But God was good and gracious to me and brought me a godly man. We dated God's way, and because we waited until our wedding night to have that physical relationship, we were able to become friends and made a good decision based on character, integrity, and love for God we each had. We've been married 29 years, and we are still good friends. So, I am asking you to obey God and remove the obscene materials in the library that causes children to become addicted to pornography and hurt themselves and others. Thank you."
Thank you.
Lucia Bell. Charlie McElvein.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Charlie McElvein. My address is 128 Mesa del Sol here in Kerrville. This challenge isn't only taking place in Kerrville, it impacts virtually every public library in the country. As a parent, you need to be aware of what your child is reading, and that parent has every right to tell that child, "No, this isn't appropriate for you." But that right ends when another parent comes in looking for that exact same information. The staff of the Buttholesworth Library developed a very workable solution, which was supported by the Kerrville City Council. And I support the library staff and the city council for the action they took. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Rector.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel. It is a pleasure to be here tonight. William Rector, 705 Water Street. And tonight is a celebration of free speech, and it's great to have the opportunity to hear people express themselves. And that right is given to us by Article III of the Bill of Rights and also the First Amendment. But the corollary of free speech is freedom of access to information, information that we may or may not agree with. But I spent five years of my life serving in the military so that we would have that ability. And I may not want to read some of the books that are in our library, but I gave five years to make sure that they were able to be in that library. And I'm here to support the library. We have a wonderful library. It does a tremendous job within our community, and I praise the staff, I praise the library board, and I praise also the Friends of the Library, a wonderful group that supports our library. It really hasn't been talked tonight about the American Library Association. And I want to bring a couple of facts about that. For 140 years, the American Library Association has been the trusted voice of libraries, not only in America but around the world. It's governed by 180 members of a council. And there's been some remarks about the qualities of some of the governing board of that association. But with 180 members, you're going to have a broad cross-section of America on that board. It is the oldest and largest library association in the world. It accredits libraries, and we need to have our library here in Kerrville, a Buttholesworth Library, be a member of that American Library Association so that we have accreditation. It is very, very important. "Ban Book Week" has occurred for 40 years. This is not something new that's just come out of the woodwork, but it celebrates the freedom to read and spotlights attempts at censoring books. And censoring is not one of the things that promotes free speech. And I appreciate your support of our library. I appreciate your support of our librarian staff, and I thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lillian Beard.
You know, I've sat here and listened to all the praises for the library staff. And it's wonderful to be praised and held up for things that you've done. But what about being held accountable also for things that you've done? You knowingly put these books in front of the children's section, knowing that kids were going to be walking by, looking at these, asking their parents about them. Their parents were unhappy about them. So, when all the hullabaloo and everything started about this, what did you do? You moved the books right across the hallway from the teen area, which to me, again, was the fault of someone not planning this very well. And I don't think that the books that were displayed on that table has any right to be sitting where our children can see them, pick them up, touch them, especially when they're in a comic book form. How many kids love comic books? They're going to pick this up, and they're going to look at it. Their mother may be over in another section with a smaller child trying to find a book, but this one stops by this table and is looking at this stuff. That's not right. That's not what we're supposed to do as a society. We're supposed to protect our children, not expose them to things like this. I've spoken before on this, and I thoroughly believe that books should not be banned from a library, and we've not asked anyone to do that. What we have wanted is for the books of this caliber to be placed in an area that the children are not allowed into, whether that be a room with a handle high enough that they can't reach it to get into the room, wherever, but not to be accessible to our children. I'm so glad that none of my great-grandchildren are here and that would have been possibly exposed to this because their parents go to the library all the time with their children. But I'm sure glad that they weren't here during this time. To my library, the one that I've got a library card for, and I want someone to take responsibility about what happened, to at least stand up to everyone and say, "We did this, we made a mistake, we're sorry, what can we do to make it better?" But somebody needs to be held accountable. If it's the head librarian, if it's the staff members, whoever it was that made that decision to put those books there and expose our children to this, someone needs to be made accountable. And you are the governing body over the library, and it's your responsibility to do something about this so that it never happens again. Thank you.
Robin Monroe.
Thank you.
My name is, excuse me, I've been sitting a long time. My name is Robin Monroe, and I'm standing in proxy for Bethany Puccio. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here this evening. We are both residents in the city. "This message is what we have heard from him, and we declare it to you. God is light; in him there is no darkness at all. If we claim to have fellowship with him but yet walk in darkness, we lie, and we do not live out the truth. But if we walk in light, and he is the light, we have fellowship with one another. In the blood of Jesus, his son purifies us from all sin." That's in 1 John 1, Chapter 1, verse 5 through 7. There's been a lot of lies spoken about this issue of sexualizing children at the library. From the very beginning, there has been a constant effort on the part of most of the city council, city staff, and some of the press to keep this issue in the dark. Those of us who continue to bring it to you are exposing it and bringing it to the light. Councilman Herring stated that the children do not have access to these books in the library. This is false. "The portion of the book that I read at the last meeting is available to minors, both in paperback and download. The mayor said that she has not seen the books, nor did she intend to. I chose to read a portion from one of the books at the October 25th meeting to shed light on the content in these books that were being celebrated by the city and give light to the content in these books. After the reading, I was accosted in the hallway by the chief of police. I was threatened with arrest and investigated for disorderly conduct for reading a portion of the book available to 12-year-olds in our library. Luke 12, verse 3, says, "There is nothing concealed that will not be disclosed or hidden." There will not, that will not be made known. "What you have said in the dark will be heard in the daylight, and what you have whispered in the ear in the inner room is will be proclaimed on the rooftops. It is time for each of you to seek the truth and then tell the truth. Perhaps lies spoken have been out of ignorance, but there is no excuse for that." So, the truth is that our children are being sexualized at the public library. The truth is that the ALA has been open about their agenda for social justice, querying the library's social chain. If that is a golden standard, as our library director suggests, it's fool's gold. The ALA began receiving funds in the 90s from the Gates Foundation and George Soros Open Society, among other progressive organizations. Emily Dobrinsky, the incoming president of the LLA, is a self-proclaimed Marxist. If you took 10 minutes to look into the agenda, you would find it very dark. If you have not already taken the time to look for it yourself, it's the least you can do as elected officials. The ultimate test of the moral of a society is the kind of world we leave to our children. The ultimate test of the moral of a society is the kind of world we leave to our children. Derek Bonhoeffer. We are here tonight because we, of the inaction of the city council, is addressed. When it first came to light in September, we are asking you to take appropriate action tonight. We want no further association with the ALA. A full review of library policies. All sexual explicit books to be moved to separate section, and accountability for all staff that intentionally participated in this, either by their action or their inaction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I agree with many of the things that have already been said, but I want to bring up a few points. Number one, our library is nowhere near any of the schools in our community. There's no way that a child walking home from school can just zip into the library and read anything they want to read. Somebody has to take that child to that library, and that person is responsible for the child while they're there, just like if they took them to the ice cream shop or the skating rink or anywhere else, whether it's the parent or a friend of the parent. So these kids are not just popping into the library to discover things that they shouldn't know. Number two, I spent a long time earlier, like actually last week, talking to Mrs. She told me about some of the books. She told me about some of the things that she disagreed with. Some of the things were that first-tongue kiss being described in decal by children who were trying it out for the first time. Sometimes one of the books was about that early groping, that uncomfortable stuff that went on in the backseat when you really didn't know what you were going to do. These are in the teen book section. Most of the books that she talked about were about LGBTQ issues. They were, I think somebody already mentioned I M Jazz, about a little girl who felt, from the time she was two, that she was in the wrong body. I would much rather my child read these books and be exposed to this material when they live at home with me, and I can explain my value system and why I agree or why I don't, than to wait until they're 18 years old, they go away to college, and if they bump into this stuff for the first time and we've never really discussed it because it wasn't allowed in our household, he's going to have to figure it out on his own without my input, without my value system. And the last thing, all the children that I know in this community and in several other communities have cell phones. Some of these kids, most of them, by the time they're six and they go to school, their parents want them to have a cellphone. I know kids at the age of three who have their own cell phones. I can't think of a single young adult, young teen child, who is going to go to the library and check out a book and slog through the first 100 pages until they find that four pages of the really juicy stuff to read, and then sit there and try to figure out exactly what are they talking about and exactly how is this positioned when they can get on the internet and in two one-thousandths of a second have 50 websites where they can see it in action.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. And thank you, Roman, for bringing this issue. We appreciate it. And I first have to say that I definitely also agree with the rights that are given to us by God and protected by the Bill of Rights. That's the difference. Those rights are given to us by God. The Bill of Rights says what the government cannot take away from us. Very simply, my name is Ian Doherty. I live at 708 Smoky Mountain Drive here in Kerrville. I'm here to address the issue of grooming material in the Buttholesworth Memorial Library. We may find offense with this description of the books, but let's end the word gains. A spade is a spade. I know you are all for banning books as much as I am, right? We're not here to ban books, but to preserve innocence. Children are innocent and deserve to be kids, not objects of sexual exploitation. The evil un, excuse me, the evil underage slavery, commonly called child trafficking, is vile and robs a helpless child of innocence. It very often begins with this kind of grooming tactics. Like a frog in a pot, grooming always begins seemingly innocently, but the danger is real unless we intervene, both scenarios end in death. Children are irreversibly and permanently damaged, and doesn't, it does not discriminate whether migrant at the border or your son's daughters or grandchildren. All kids are at risk. Unless the chain is broken, the child at some point, because they see the behavior as normal and okay, will most likely pass on their torture to another innocent child who also didn't deserve the emotional pain and confusion, which does come with this type of selfish act. This chain of injustice must be broken for the victims of this pedophile practice of grooming now and for those of tomorrow. And if you don't act now to stop this in its infancy, I hope your soul is prepared to look the next innocent victim in the eyes and tell them with tears streaming down their little cheeks why you didn't do something to help them when you had the chance to do so. Thank you.
My name is Jaclyn Hall. I'm at 1800 Junction Highway, apartment 8E here in Kerrville, and I wanted to thank Roman and Barbara for bringing this up. And this is something that it cannot go away. We can't just push it under, under the rug. We have to preserve the innocence of children, as previous speakers have said. I want to quote First Samuel 2:30 in Scripture. "For those who honor me," it's God speaking, "for those who honor me I will honor, and those who despise me shall be lightly esteemed." God established the definition of right and wrong. He's our creator. He, He created the whole system that we live under, right and wrong, and He instituted government to defend the innocent and to uphold the standard of right and wrong. That is why government exists. We need to remove all contact with the American Library Association for reasons previously stated, the Marxism that exists there, and godless belief systems. And we also need to put the obscene material in a protected place where kids cannot get a hold of it. Those are the two main things that we're asking for. So we appreciate y'all's time. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Katie Capell. I've been a Kerrville resident for six years, a Texas resident for 50, and I've been an obsessive library goer in San Diego, Los Angeles, Houston, Austin, and now Kerrville. And I'm very proud of the library that they have here, and I have enjoyed going to it. I'm a retired probation officer. I'm a Christian. I'm a grandmother, and I am a strong supporter of our Constitution. And this whole issue today has to do with free speech and the First Amendment. I'm sorry I didn't wear my Lady Liberty costume again. I have been in the Buttholesworth Library two or three times a week for six years, and I have observed the staff. They're very professional. They care and are motivated to keep all visitors interested in reading. I think you have done well in setting up the management of this library. They do not deserve to be insulted and threatened as they have been in the last few weeks. One of the librarians has had people throw trash in her yard at home. There have been overreaction to this whole issue. As professional librarians, they belong to the American Library Association, which collects information on nation's libraries. The ALA does not recommend books, only strategies to encourage library use, and that is one of the reasons for the Ban Book Table. I found on the Ban Book Table a whole lot of books that at one time were controversial but now are mainstream, such as Harry Potter. There were things like the, some of the little boy books that language was rude, like farting and things like that, but, and, and then there's things that have turned into classics, like To Kill a Mockingbird in Steinbeck's books. It's been, they've had the Ban Book Table for 13 years at this library. This is the first time there's been objections. There is a procedure to ask that a book be removed that's unsuitable, and nobody has done that. It does not require marching in front of the library or appearing at city council about books that are in the library. The administration's already proposed a solution for the Ban Book Table next year. What really hasn't been brought up is the fact that these items have been litigated already at several other places in the country, and I imagine your city attorney has already found this out. "The constitutionally protected speech cannot be suppressed solely to protect children or young adults from ideas or images a legislative body believes to be unsuitable for them." This was from a 1975 court case. "Censorship by libraries of constitutionally protected speech, whether for protection or for any other reason violates the First Amendment." Supreme Court Justice William Brennan, "If there is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment, it is that government may not prohibit expression of an idea simply because society finds the idea itself offensive or disagreeable." William O. Douglas, "Restriction of free thought and free speech is the most dangerous of subversions. It is the one un-American act that could most easily defeat us." I have noticed that practically every child that comes into the library is there with their parent. In this state of liberty and individual freedom, we should be thrilled that this is an area that is solely under the purview of the parent. It is up to the parent to make that decision.
Carol Milburger. I'm thrilled to say that I've lived here for over 18 years. We had a business until a couple of years ago. I guess I want to start as a taxpayer. I've enjoyed using the library for free, even though we live in the county. I hope that doesn't change, not just for me but for everyone else who's enjoyed that. And I see that benefit, the trade between the city and the county, as the best of our local government, and I hope that does not go away. As a patron, like so many people have said, we have a wonderful library staff. I go regularly. I go to meetings. I check out books, both in person and online, and I'm absolutely thrilled. It's one of the first things I looked at. Not that you need more people to move to Kerrville, but was, I went and looked at the library before we moved, and it, it's, it's wonderful for a small town. I think most importantly for the conversations we're having here is, as a grandmother, I take my grandchildren to the library, the Kerrville Library, and I've been doing that since they moved here. They're ages four, six, and eight. They act the way children act in the library. They try to use their inside voices, and they run, and they pull books off the shelves. And I've never once been the least bit concerned about what they're going to find, or, we go to the library all the time. It's, and that's not going to change. So thank you, and thank you for your, the wonderful things you do, and thank you to city council.
Thank you.
And that is the end of our citizen speakers.
All right. Thank you all. Counsel, it's your turn. So, Roman, do you have a few words you'd like to say?
I have more than a few, actually. I think this warrants it, but yes.
Now, we two are on a kind of a time limit.
Five-minute time limit, absolutely. I just want to clarify that, give it a little bit of introduction. I was hoping it is beginning, but the reason I agree to sponsor this item is because it's an issue that our constituents have continually asked us to discuss and address. Counsel, as a majority, has not taken action to do so. So a constituent contacted counsel and requested this item, and I agreed to sponsor it, to give us the opportunity to discuss this matter and take action that we believe is necessary related to this issue. And I appreciated all the input that we've received from all of our constituents and members of the public. And I look forward to hopefully coming to, to some type of resolution for the benefit of the entire community, including its children. I've received a number of emails, dozens in fact, about this issue, and I'm still responding to all of those. So I appreciate your patience, but I hope that my comments tonight expand on my response. This item was on our agenda back in December, and it was placed only for discussion, no action. And as our city manager stated, it was pla, he stated at our, that meeting, it was placed on the agenda primarily to allow staff to clear misinformation that they were hearing from the community. Now, trust me, I think we can all agree that we wish we still weren't talking about this issue, but the reason we are is because counsel hasn't taken action. We haven't done anything. We haven't taken responsibility for what's been done. Many people are reaching out saying that those who are concerned with this material are trying to infringe on someone's freedom of speech. And in my opinion, what's actually at the heart of this issue is being fobbed and disguised under Ban Books Week. That's not the case. I truly believe we all support the library. We're not trying to ban books. No one's even said that here. This isn't about homophobia or LGBTQ, and there's no intent or goal to infringe on anyone's freedoms that are guaranteed to us by God and enshrined in our Constitution. The city council has not taken action on this matter, so respectfully, it's inaccurate to also state that we have done so and that changes have been made to the library's policies. Children don't need to be transported to the library by an adult. In fact, whenever I was younger, I rode my bike down to the library. And if you think many more years ago, children and many more children walked to and from the library or used some other mode of transportation that didn't require an adult. And when it comes to electronic and online availability, this, this information, you're absolutely right. Technology has advanced, but the use of a private cellphone or device is not under the purview of the city. That's rightfully under the purview of the parents and legal guardians. But the library is under the purview of the city. That's why it's important for us to do this. Another thing that's come up is safeguards that are allegedly in place or barriers at our library. We were able to use one of my family member's library card, who is a minor, to check out and view these books with the material that's profane, obscene, or pornographic. There was not an added verification process or any type of barrier that prevented us from getting that book and for using that minor's library card to check out any of those materials. So as far as safeguards go, I don't know if we actually do have any, because any minor reasonably would be able to check those out then. So whatever safeguards we may have in place, they also definitely went away when we used the banned books display. Actively promoting sexual and explicit material for children in the plain view of children is infringing on the very right that I believe we all stand to protect, and that's the right for the parents to educate their children as they see fit. When a child passes by and they don't have the opportunity, a parent doesn't have the opportunity to move their child away and prevent that, that's infringing on their right. People will say that the press release was put out to notify parents. Well, it wasn't actually put out until after the display was up. The American Library Association may have been an old standard in years past, but times change. And when the ALA encourages a library to put And when the ALA encourages a library to put up a display called Banned Books Week to have all this obscene material in it, clearly it's time to reevaluate our policies and our stance and our association with them. I don't understand why counsel doesn't want to discuss this and take action that we find necessary. I think it's clear, it's, people will say that there's only a few people or a loud minority who are bringing this up, and I think that's mistakenly portrayed. When you look at who, how many votes it takes for one council member to get on council, it's about 1,500 to 2,000. And as we just heard, they have over 1,000 signatures. That's over, and they collected that in less than a week. That's over half of the number of votes it took all of us to get on council. So, I don't see how that can be argued as a minority. In fact, it's probably a majority. And if you think that's justified enough to say that this cause shouldn't be on our council agenda because of that, then maybe we need to reevaluate and maybe, you know, argue that none of us should even be on the dais too then. And I suspect if they continue to collect more signatures, that they'll get more, and this will rise. So, I would ask some of the dispel council members, what are we willing to do to take accountability and responsibility for this to move forward for our city?
You ready?
Uh huh.
I just want to thank everybody for being engaged. I've received more emails on this issue than any other. At last count, I had received at least 75 emails, majority of which expressed support for the library and its staff. I want to start with this as a statement to remind everyone that we, as council members, have constituents on all sides of every issue. I think it's common for any one of us to say or feel that we aren't being heard if we don't hear exactly what we hope to hear as a result of reaching out to our government officials. In fact, I've got emails that say that I'm not listening to constituents, but I want to set the record straight. I listen to all voices, but not just from one particular viewpoint. I even listen to voices that I know can't speak for themselves, and I believe that that is what it means to be a local elected leader official. After the first learning that there was a complaint with the library on banned books display from a friend who had seen the social media post, I reached out immediately to the city staff for clarification and comment. This person had seen a comment on social media stating, "This is what the table looked like," again, directly in front of the children's section. There were three photos depicted in that post, one of which was an open page of a book with two boys sharing a milkshake, the other two photos showing the display. The first picture, I later learned, was not even part of the display. It had actually been removed from the shelves of the library for whatever purpose that author was trying to serve. The same day, in fact, within an hour of my request for information, I received a response from staff. The email contained a general statement and a timeline of a complaint lodged, and then an immediate corrective course of action. The email reads in part, "This week is Banned Books Week for one week only. Even though all books may not be appropriate for individuals or their children, we all have different likes and dislikes. It's about the right to choose freely for ourselves. Censorship denies that freedom as an individual." Then, I was provided information about the complaint that was law, the complaint being lodged on Tuesday, September 24th, where a resident complained about two books that were on the display and then ended up checking those books out. They were no longer on the display. That was the complaint that was lodged on Tuesday. In addition to the materials being checked out, the table was then relocated as a result of that concern of that person lodging the complaint. So, the books had been removed, the table had been moved. Between the correspondence and the following council meeting, there was a library protest, and from the reports I've been given, it was mostly respectful, but there were a few troubling incidents, and I wasn't there, so I won't recount those. At the following council meeting, Danielle McGee spoke in detail about library policies, provided the timeline of events, and an explanation of how the displays at the library are handled. Included in this discussion was a specific explanation of the banned books display. This Banned Books Week has been celebrated in our community for over 12 years, and until this year, there were no complaints lodged against the display. The books are selected for the display, for the display include two things. One, utilizing the previous year's data collection of the most challenged books of the year, and then including historically banned books. This is why the books on the table were there. It was not a subjective decision. It was made based on 12 years of continuing to do the same thing with no issues arriving. However, this year was different, and for the first time, there was a complaint. And that complaint was handled quickly in order to eliminate the concern and to avoid any other potential risk to minors. One, on part of Danielle's time in front of council, and arguably one of the most important things she said was offering a solution that considered how to mitigate banned books and challenged books from potentially getting into the hands of minors for future years on a display. She proposed not removing the books at all from the shelves where they belong and simply providing an alternative method to celebrate banned books. In the past, no issue. This year, complaint lodged, problem solved. And after all that, our librarians are harassed at a meeting with finger pointing in their faces saying that they should be ashamed of themselves. And then after that, continued harassment, how we should be ashamed of ourselves, and then emails that say, "I know who you are, you may not know who I am," things like this. Regarding the misinformation I heard, books located in the children's section, not a true statement. The display was housed in the same location that all displays are housed. If you enter the library, you will notice there are two places where logically a display could go, and that is one of the two places, which is within 20 to 40 feet of the children's section. However, when the complaint was lodged, I repeat, the table was moved. It wasn't put there to groom children, it wasn't placed there, it was, it has always been there. May I, may I have another minute? I've got some specific.
I'll take another minute too then, if you give her one.
Let's, let's, we just, let's keep it at where we are.
All right, go ahead, you're next.
I'm thankful for everyone who came to speak tonight. I've listened to everyone. I've actually responded to every email. I'm appreciative to the people who said they were going to pray for my soul, because my soul needs it. Listen. And listen carefully. Your faith does not give you license to demonize people with whom you disagree. The treatment of our library staff by some members of this community has been more than distasteful. The year I learned to read, that library opened. I've had a library card there every year since 1967. And though I don't visit the building often, I do use the library to read books on my Kindle. What I've seen in my experience with a library is librarians with a very specific mission. That's encouraged reading. I think many of us have had the same experience with libraries, but my experience has been with this library. Yes, you all get gold stars. Banned Book Week is about controversial books. Wait, A100. And I hope we have another display next year. Guess what? Those books will also be controversial. But they will be there for those who read them. My parents ran a print shop when I was a little boy, and they didn't take me to the library. Went by myself. And I got in a lot of trouble at the library, but it wasn't from the books. It was from running around and talking too much and playing in the elevator. And the librarian who chastised me frequently ended up being my next door neighbor when I was an adult. I know the stories she would tell. Listen, libraries are for everyone. They're for those of you who think I'm going to hell, and those, for those of you who don't even believe in hell. I support the library. I support its mission, I support its staff. And Roman, we have taken action. We just haven't taken action like you wanted us to take action. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, this whole thing started with a display too close to the children's books. It was moved. Then, the display had pornography accessible to children. So, arrangements were made and a explanation given of what would be done in the future regarding making those books accessible to children. Then they wanted an apology. Then they wanted discipline and criminal charges. Now, there's a petition that says they want this porn or these banned books not accessible to children under the age of 18. They find these books offensive, repulsive, disgusting, pornographic. And maybe we just ought to close the library to children, because let me tell you, I, I got some books from the library. Okay? I got a lot of books from the library. There's the Bible. There's pornography in the Bible, there's bestiality, there's rape in the Bible. Let's, let's take every book. Look, there's a Holocaust book here. The pages are marked with pornography, sexual. There's all kinds of books. I've got a whole thing here, full of books. Now, I have a list here of high circulating authors. High circulating authors whose books complain, or whose books contain sexual content. There's a whole list of authors. Those have not been addressed. All the books I have right here, they're included in popular fiction, true crime, religion, mythology, war, Holocaust, civil war, slavery, and the KKK. Right here, I have a synopsis and some notes of some of the books on the banned book list. They've been checked out of our library. One of the books, Captain Underpants, has been checked out of our library 683 times. My point is, this is a public library. It is here for all walks of life, for anybody to read whatever they want to read. And by not removing all these books from the library, like you want to remove the LGBTQ books, you're censoring. You're censoring. You reference LGBTQ a lot over the course of the last several weeks. I've heard it myself. So, I am here to say that you go down a slippery slope when you start choosing what goes in our public library. It says, "We don't want you banning the books. We just want you making choices of what you put in our library." Well, I don't want our librarians making choices for me. I ought to be able to read whatever I want to read in the library. And that's my stance on that.
There will be no, no clapping. Okay, counsel, we are at the end of this. What I would like to do, I would like to make a motion. My motion is simply this. I would like to move that the library advisory board make a thorough review of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library Collection Development Policy, including the appendix, and bring back to council the results of their review.
What would they be reviewing?
The policies.
Well, I get that, but what are they reviewing? I'm fine, and we can discuss the motion. I heard the motion.
I move that the library advisory board make a thorough review of the Buttholesworth Memorial Library Collection Development Policy, including the appendix, and bring back to council the results of their review. I'm just simply asking them to take a, take a look at everything that is in that. About 30, there's 30-some, 35 pages of that policy, and look at it, see if there's anything that they feel needs to be changed, and bring back the results to us.
I will second that.
Then, okay.
All in favor, right hand please?
We have discussion on the, I mean, that's.
We've already had this.
No, we have to have discussion on the motion.
What would you like to say?
So, I'm trying to understand, the review that they're, you're, you're asking in your motion is.
Just to do, just to do a review?
I think they know it's in the policy, so are we, I mean, I don't know if there's a reason for them to review it. I mean, they went through the policy, they know it's in the policy, unless we're telling them specifically something to look at. I mean, we went through this with staff on the ordinance for short-term rentals about, we need to be specific, otherwise, what are they really looking for?
Well, I just, and I realize that it's broad-based, I understand that, but I just want them to go back, take a look at it, and see if there's anything there that they feel needs to be changed in light of everything that has happened.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to amend your motion to include at the end of it, because you ended, I guess, they'll come back with their review, and, and my motion would be to add at the end of it, "To the extent that it removes all association with the American Library Association and to place proper safeguards to prevent books with obscene, profane, and pornographic material to be easily accessible to minors." That would be my motion to amend your motion to the end.
And I, I would not, I, I will not accept that.
Well, I'm making a motion, so it can be called, it has to be called for a second.
Is there a second to Roman's motion?
We still have your motion on the table first.
Oh, that's right, we need to vote.
Well, no, my motion is to amend her motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, let's, we will vote.
No, my motion's to amend your motion, so that, that's super procedures now. So, we have to handle mine, and then if mine doesn't count, we go back to the original.
All right, I will agree with you. Okay, so we will, do we have a second on Roman's amendment to my motion? Okay, we do not. Well, I will go back to the ori, it fails. I will go back to the original motion.
That's been said.
And we have a second on it, is that correct?
There's a second.
We have a second?
Counsel member Hughes.
Yes.
We're just seeing what they bring back.
Oh, Brenda did, I'm sorry. And all in favor, right hand please. All right, it is unanimous, thank you all. And we have one more item to do.
Yes.
Okay. Roman and Brenda, you, you were the lead on interviews.
Uh huh.
Do you have a motion for us?
We do. I'll, I'll speak, and then I'll let Councilmember Hughes say anything if she wants to add to it. But on a less controversial note, I was able to talk with two of the three applicants. One of them didn't get back to me, but I feel that the two that I spoke with are eligible, and I'd be happy for them to serve. It's my understanding that Brenda talked with the one that didn't get back to me, so.
I've talked to all three.
Okay, perfect, so she talked to all three. So, I'm good with all three. I'm happy to make a motion, but I'll let Councilmember Hughes say anything else if she wants to.
No, all three are more than qualified. They're all eager, willing to serve. And I would bring forth their nomination for Shawna Ebert, Wendy Massey as a returning, and Elena Ramirez.
Second that.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, right hand, it is unanimous.
And I'll note that we had four vacancies, only three applications. Councilmember Hughes, and then I also did talk to Daryl, and he said he'll look for another one to see if we can fill their last vacancy soon.
Thank you. Is there anything for future council meetings?
I do. I'd like to see if we can find out a way to make better use of the space we have in this city hall to better accommodate seating for our citizens. I'm disappointed that we can't facilitate all our constituents like we used to, and so I think we need to take a look at the council chamber and reorganize it as soon as possible, but not later than January of next year, is my opinion.
Do we have a second for that? It fails for lack of a second. At this time, 10:41, we are adjourned. 10:41, we are adjourned. Thank you all.